Okay, ladies and gentlemen. We're gonna start. Tonight is Tuesday, January 5th, 2022, or 2021, at 7:30 PM. This is our first meeting of the year. The company gave me a new computer, so I have a new fresh computer. Welcome, Happy New Year to everybody. Tonight is the Planning Zoning Commission. Tonight we have a public hearing and a general meeting, and I already said it once, Happy New Year. So without, to remember tonight, we're starting at 7:30 and we're putting in a a soft or hard stop, it's September, whatever you wanna call it. We voted last year to stop these meetings in after two and a half hours, which I think is very fair. So here we go. The first item on our agenda is a continuation of public hearing regarding coastal site plan review number 51. Flood stop prevention application number 403. Sanford and Deborah Rich at 26 Beach Drive. Jeremy?
Yes, we got an email from applicants representative attorney Michael Murray, who's asked if these be immediately continued to January 12th, 2021, a week from tonight at 7:30 PM, with the go-to meeting information coming out on Thursday.
Yes, tonight, thank you. Tonight, just to remember, we're on, Jeremy and I are room 213 in Town Hall, and this meeting's done via go-to meeting in accordance with state regulations. The next item on our agenda, continuation of public hearing regarding special product application number 317. ELD Street Properties LLC, 1049 Boston Post Road. I don't need to read the rest of it. This was a hearing, a public hearing that was originally opened on December 1st, 2020. This is the Compass Store that's going to what, or possibly going to what was known as the former Tina Dragoan store.
Correct.
Jeremy, what do we got?
Let me recall from the December 1st meeting. This is, we're gonna put a real estate office in the Tina Dragoan space. That's a portion of the first floor. The remainder of the first floor is now occupied by Sipsters.
It got continued to next week.
Which was a liquor store. The upstairs of this building is currently small offices. And last, for the record, Attorney Robert Maslin submitted photographs of not only the front of the building, but the back of the building. If you can get a sense of what that, what that's all about. One of the issues here, of course, as we discussed last time, is the commission needs to make a special permit finding under section 72 G of Darien zoning regulations. Section, I think it's 1058, Bob, is, if that's correct? Yes, 1058. And we talked about that at the December 1st meeting, whether this proposal meets those criteria outlined in the regulations. Since the last meeting, Attorney Maslin and I have reviewed some historical information for Darien regarding what was going on in the past, various three of real estate offices. And Bob, and I can certainly answer any questions for the commission.
Thanks, you want to have Bob asking you the first?
Yeah, we'll let Bob present and I can fill in for that.
Mr. Madison, I did see, or Attorney Madison, I did see you, there you are, welcome.
Happy New Year.
Go right ahead.
I think this is working. You, I have a slide up on the monitor. It just says slides added January 5th, 2021, and I just want to make sure that's up on your screens.
Yes, we can see it.
Okay. When we left off, there was one question that I think a couple of commissioners had, and that was, what was the history of specifically Caldwell Banker, but also a few others in the Central Business District? And as Jeremy mentioned, we had a discussion about that. Kind of goes back a long way and there's some history to it, and I've added slides, kind of walking through some of the things that Jeremy and I talked about and with respect to planning and zoning commissions that were actually made addressing these over time. I have submitted copies of what I could for the record and I have them outlined on the slide, so let me go to the first slide.
Just send them, you have copies for you.
Just, just, Bob, just to interrupt if you don't mind. We didn't get anything in our packet, so this is, we're gonna see for the first time on the slides, right? Then you might email part copies?
Yes.
We went out to the commission later this evening or first thing tomorrow morning, which is your, your slide presentation, as well as a number of commission approvals approving various real estate offices within the past year. Well, Bob, you can explain those and the findings in those circumstances. But basically, what you sent to us within the past hour was a copy of this PowerPoint and those written decisions.
Yeah.
Which is like a big piece of paper, that's funny, that's funny.
Okay, it's, it's simple stuff and it's in the record. It's a matter of record in any event, so these are what they are. There's William Pitt Sotheby at 1057 Boston Post Road. This has been an office, real estate office rather, since 1949, and it has at least one variance. But the important thing on this, I think, is it's been there since 1949, which is, I think we can all agree that it's prior to the current regulation. In 1999, the ZBA approved variances. One was a side yard variance that had to do with the driveway width and the side yard for access to a parking lot. And the Planning and Zoning Commission approved a 1220 foot square, 1220 square foot addition, first and second floor space. This does have the finding of impracticality on the first floor. And the rest of it is pretty straightforward approval. But it does, for purposes of, I think, the inquiry, how did it get there? It predates zoning. The expansions were approved with a finding of impracticality and the other things under the regulation. Required for business offices on the first floor. Financial Real Estate was located at 1050 Boston Post Road. That was an old house. I don't have actual approvals for that. My guess is it went back before zoning. Probably a similar situation with William Pitt back to maybe not 1949, but back quite a few years. That building's been demolished and replaced by the Blue Mercury Building. Caldwell Banker has an interesting history of hopscotch. Right now, it's at 893 Post Road. It ended up in that space without any particular action by the commission because the prior occupant of that space was a different real estate office, as Jeremy and I discussed. Previously, it was in one of the buildings across the street over there, either next door to the firehouse or that second building between the firehouse and the railroad bridge. That probably predated the zoning regulations that we have today. This is a picture of it when it was located in the Darien Playhouse Building. This had to be back probably in the 70s, maybe the 80s. I don't have, and I don't think Jeremy was able to find anything in the way of a formal approval for this space. Again, it probably went in before the current regulation, probably at a time when real estate offices were considered allowed as though they were retail and, yeah, commercial sales and services.
I'm just noting that.
I'm sorry, that photograph was Jeremy providing that.
I'm just noting, I'm just noting a little tongue in cheek. I guess parking wasn't an issue back then. One car.
Well, I think it's, well, maybe this was after hours, I don't know. But it, it, just to answer your question on a substantive level, not tongue in cheek, the Darien Dinner, the Darien Theater was, and still is, a party to a three-way shared parking agreement that involves that large parking lot that runs from the theater down to Darien Sports Shop. So parking, yes, parking was not an issue because it was already covered. I think the photograph speaks a thousand words about parking, but we're about 30 or 40 years later now. Okay, Financial Wheeler. Now, this is a interesting thing. It's the only denial that I was able to come up with, and I believe the only denial that Jeremy was able to find. This was previously across the street in that row of stores with the perpendicular parking. And at one point in 1996, Financial Wheeler had an opportunity to move into a retail space that had recently become vacant next door. The commission denied the application to expand the existing real estate office into the vacant adjacent space. The reasons included, mentioned in the decision of a strong policy of retail space on the first floor. That language is mentioned in Jeremy's memo in our application. And so this strong policy reference shouldn't be new in terms of this application, it's been in front of you already. The, however, I did look at the 2006 and 2016 plans of development. I think the 2016 is now called Plan of Conservation and Development. 2006, I think it was still just Plan of Development. They don't state the same strong policy. And in 2016, the Plan of Conservation and Development, as I referenced in previous slides, 16, 17, and 21, recognizes changes in the CBD. It talks about resilience in this area, and it has the following quote, "Residents have expressed a willingness to consider more uses and intensity provided it results in an attractive pedestrian-friendly environment that is attractive and desirable." The point here is the Plan of Development, over three versions, went from virtually a prohibition of real estate offices and similar uses on the first floor to recognizing resiliency and an openness or willingness to consider more uses and intensity. And under the current regulations, this is allowed by special permit, so it's not as though it's a prohibited use. I'm not aware of any other denials of applications for first floor real estate office uses in the CBD. There are a couple on the list here that are not on the post road. Ravis at 22 Oakings Highway South, which is a block away, it's across the Center Street lot from CVS and I guess the church. That was approved for additions and alterations. First floor use was approved as a real estate office, and the commission made the findings of impracticality when it approved those two applications. Sotheby, 22 Grove Street, which is behind the property that we're talking about in this application, and next to the Grove Street Plaza. There were two applications, one in 2010, one in 2016. I'm sorry, 2005 and 2016. And I understand it from reading the decisions that the earlier one was for a back office support space. I'm assuming that meant that you didn't have customers or clients going directly to that part of their operation. And then eventually, there was a 2016 application for basically a straightforward real estate office. Again, that, those two approvals mentioned the findings of impracticality. And then the only other one I, oops, the only one I, what I, other one I could find is, and I didn't find it, I just happen to know it's there, Tivitts Real Estate. I couldn't tell you how long that's been there. I know it's a long time. Obviously, it would predate the current regulations. And I think the only activity that's happened over there is a law firm moved in when Al Tivitts started practicing and started his own firm. So these are the historic real estate offices that Jeremy and I could come up with. I think I've covered all of them unless I missed one or two that Jeremy can fill you in on.
Phil Pones, whatever he works.
That's correct. Al Philopone's been bouncing around downtown for a few years. At one point, he was on the second floor, I think it was above the theater.
Great.
Then he was on a.
Then he got approved with Danny Dossetti's building, the White Building, and now he's above Steam, I think.
I'm not, I'm not, I don't even know who that is. I'm not sure it's much of an office operation, to a certain extent.
He's got his own, I'm trying to look it up. He's got his own, like subdivision of, like a bigger company like Sotheby's or something like that, Ravis. Let's just say with Ravis.
This, this sounds like a satellite office type thing.
That's fine.
Okay, and then the only, the only thing I else, the only other thing I wanted to mention is I was thinking about parking again. And all I could add to that, other than to reiterate what Jeremy said in his memo, that it really is not an issue here because the parking requirement for office is less than the requirement for retail. The only thing I can add to that is if this were on a second floor in the CBD, in a similar circumstance, we wouldn't be here because it wouldn't be a special use, a special permit use. But the parking thing, parking issues would be exactly the same. And the only, the only reason that I think the doors open for somebody to talk about parking is because it happens to be special permit. I don't think it's particularly significant or relevant here, just because the building is already non-conforming in parking and we're actually reducing the non-conforming, non-conformity by, by using this space for office rather than straightforward. So that's all I have for this evening. I think that covers the questions that you had at the end of the first session, so I'll answer any other questions you have. By the way, I don't have this thing up anymore, but Andrew Gartrell, who is from Compass, I saw his name pop up on one of the, one of the screens. So I, I think he's still in here, I can't, I can't see anybody's on the presenter, but, so anyway, if there's any questions, I'm happy to answer.
Jeremy, why don't you go first?
Yeah, Bob, one thing that you and I discussed that I forgot to mention when I opened here is some of the prior uses in what I'll call that first floor Tina Dragoan space. Before Tina Dragoan, it was Erica K., which is, I think, a women's clothing shop. They were there in, I think, the 2000s. Before that, it was Salon Darien, called a beauty salon. Prior to that, it was The Escape, which I think was the same company. Bob and I, I think, figured that out. Before Escape, it was called Michael's Fashion Quattiers, which is, we also took to be a beauty salon, and that was back somewhere in the 60s, we estimated. So it was personal service uses, the three salons, and then it became retail when Erica K. came in, let's call it late 90s, early 2000s, somewhere around that.
Right, so there's, there's been two retail tenants in this space. And three, maybe four, personal service tenants over the years.
Yes.
And the manufacturer of photographic equipment during World War II as a, by a government contractor of some sort. And that was actually allowed by variance until the end of it.
Yes.
Okay, you're good, Jeremy, right?
I'm good.
I'm gonna open up to any commissioner with any questions, comments, concerns. We want to raise your hand, I'll acknowledge you, you can turn your microphone off. Kara?
I mean, thank you, Attorney Maslin, I really appreciate you and the research that you and Jeremy have done on sort of the history of the spaces and how other real estate offices have ended up on the first floor in that. So I guess my issue is sort of, okay, it's been personal service a lot, there's other real estate that predates the zoning change currently. But there does, you know, the regs are what they are, and I, I guess, you know, I can see how real estate, it's, they're selling something. I know it's not selling retail, and I, I do think a real estate office is a little bit different than other kind of corporate offices. Maybe wouldn't draw or bring the same kind of pedestrian, like where pedestrians are gonna stop and look in there, you know, other kind of, you know, corporate or, you know, services offices won't have that kind of pedestrian interest and add to sort of the vibrancy of interest for pedestrians and for people downtown. I do think, though, that parking has to be considered, and I understand that it's already a non-conforming building. But I think I need to hear a little bit more about how many employees they intend to have there, what the intensity of parking usage might be, and how they intend to address it.
Well, the short answer is the same way that Tina Dragoan addressed it. There really is none. The parking spaces in the back are pretty much taken up by employees or occupants of the building. The office is upstairs, the owner of the liquor store next door. I think there's a total of four spaces in the back.
Is that building part of joint?
I'm sorry?
Is that location part of the joint parking agreement?
No.
Okay, so it's not like the liquor stores, I think they are, right?
The, no, no.
Which one are we talking about?
You're talking about the big parking lot behind the theater and down to.
But isn't one of the liquor stores that's where Kennedy's used to be, aren't they part of it?
No, Kennedy's is down the street. Sipsters is a different store.
We're talking about Sipsters, okay. I wasn't sure which liquor store you were talking about.
It's Sipsters.
Okay.
And so and one of the previous approvals, there is a discussion or mention at least of parking in the area, particularly the Grove Street municipal parking, and I believe, I'd have to check now, that it had, it was mentioned in one of the William Pitt applications when they expanded. I could be wrong about that, but, but that parking's available.
I'm thinking more about the current applicant. And so I think they might have more employees than Tina Dragoan did. And.
More agents, but the agents aren't, just aren't there all the time. You, you may get.
That's what I want to hear about. It's like, what are they contemplating and what's their plan?
We went over that at the last meeting, it's, it's in the PowerPoint presentation, this thing? It's in here, all the number of seats?
Yeah, we, we did, I, it's a handful. I don't remember the exact number, but it's not like 20 or 30. You know, and we, and we did talk about occasional meetings, but that's no more intense than any of the other real estate offices. And the same issue, the same, the same situation would occur if they were on the second floor.
Okay, Kara, is there anybody else, have any questions for Madison or Jeremy? George, I know, George, you had a question from last time.
Well, yeah, and, and Bob and Jeremy did nice research to, to come up with it. I was interested in the Caldwell Building. And I just want to confirm that what you're telling us is there is no, there was no finding in terms of impractical or undesirable, et cetera, concerning that use, right?
Which one?
What is now Caldwell. What is that?
I believe that's correct.
That used to be Preferred Properties. This is the one right near the Darien Barber Shop on the other side of the tracks. That was Preferred Properties 10, 15, 20 years ago, I believe. And that turned into Caldwell Banker, so.
And that predates, so this.
Locate, I'm sorry, Kara?
Is that the one that predates zoning, so there wouldn't have needed to be a finding of impractical?
Right, you're correct, it predates this regulation, so there was no written approval relative to this regulation for that space.
All right, that's what I needed to be clear on, thank you.
Okay, any other question, any other questions are good, Jim's okay, Larry, Larry, you ready to turn your mic off?
Yeah, yeah, but I don't really think I have any questions, but, but thank you for all that, that background data. I mean, I, and just to throw it out, it seems to me, anything that goes into that location is gonna have a parking issue. No matter what. You know, parking, right, the parking needs for, I mean, just, just to confirm, I heard this right. The, the parking needs for, for an office, for a real estate office space are less than those for retail, or it's our regulations.
Yes, you heard it correct. You heard it correct.
Yes, I mean, this has been an ongoing issue. Every, every location that come, every, you know, we've done this repeatedly. So I don't really have a question, just, that's a comment, I guess, thank you.
Jim, you're good, Jen, you're good. With that said, I'd open it up to the general public, if anyone else wants, wants to come out of this application.
Sure, can you hear me?
Yeah, Mr. Jeff, your microphone's on, go ahead, sir.
Okay, great, thank you, thank you so much. I'll try to be brief, but I thought it'd be helpful just to share a couple of views. And I just want to share a little bit of perspective because I was a part of the effort with Wilder Gleason and Debbie Parton and Darien Revitalization, probably in 1990, or, sorry, 2002, to basically put in place the provision that I don't think anybody's focused enough upon in this conversation around, you know, getting rid of or not allowing the growth of real estate offices or financial institutions in the downtown on first floors. There hasn't been an application for a real estate office on the post road on the first floor in probably 15 or 20 years. Al Philopone was on the second floor of the Panera Bread Building for a while, which had office space. But the reason for which we, as the Darien Revitalization Initiative years ago, put forward the idea that we should not allow banks following in the footsteps of the real estate offices to consume a lot of first floor space was because we were trying to promote, you know, a pedestrian-friendly, retail-rich downtown environment that encouraged people, people to walk. And if you talk to urban planners, like our, our advisor Bob Gibb, who's worked with us in coming up with the Corbin District Project, he would tell you that if you create walls of kind of blankness or not interesting storefronts, you, you basically impede walkability. You make it less likely that people will walk and more likely that people will get in their car, drive to the next location. You know, for example, drive from Greaves Pharmacy to the Darien Sports Shop instead of leaving their car and walking. And a fundamental goal of our whole effort back in the early 2000s was to increase the walkability, the propensity to walk. So these applications sort of fly in the face of that. And that was the reason for which the bank, well, I'll call the bank ban in the CBD occurred, which was similar to what was proposed for, 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 for real estate offices years ago and nail salons. I mean, you all remember, you know, every 10 years, there's sort of a new, you know, bugaboo tenant that, you know, kind of consumes too much space and impairs the walkability and the retail friendliness of a place. And so that's, that was the logic of it. I guess I, I come to you to talk about this in the same way that I talked to you a little bit about the Darien Playhouse Building. You know, you, you keep making these incremental decisions that are really, in my opinion, just not equitable. For the Corbin District, we have to build almost 800 parking spaces to accommodate the retail, the restaurants, the office, the apartments. These buildings don't have parking, and when you put an office like Compass, which will have, you know, eight to 10, 12 people in there at a time, that's very different than a retail use, even if the regulations are, are equal between office and retail. As a practical matter, there's a lot more cars associated with the real estate office. And some of you are close to real estate offices, some of you work in real estate offices. I think you would agree that there are brokers that will park it all day and sit in the, in the space with their car parked for half a day or all day, depending upon their, their, their work that day. And that causes a problem because when this, you know this property doesn't have the parking, so where are those? And that causes a problem because when this, you know, this property doesn't have the parking. So where are those agents going to park? They're going to park on my property. They're going to park in the Darian Sports Shop property. They're going to be parking and squatting. Taking away parking spaces for retail customers. In a in in an era where we really shouldn't be encouraging that, in my opinion. So I I don't agree with Attorney Maslin in any way, shape or form. Um, parking isn't the primary reason that I object to this. It's a contributing factor. The biggest thing is. You know, we are trying for years and years to increase the walkability of our downtown. I think we've made enormous progress. But this is a step in the wrong direction, especially on the Boston Post Road. You know, I was invited up to Ridgefield by the Chamber of Commerce and their Economic Development Commission to talk about the good work we're doing in Darien. As a group, you know, the zoning commission, the private developers and others. And I laughed when I was invited. I said, God, Ridgefield is so great. I don't know why you think you should hear from us. But if you go up to Ridgefield, and I would encourage you to do it. The problem with Ridgefield's retail environment today is that they've allowed too many office uses on the first floor. So while they have a beautiful physical downtown, um, they don't have the same kind of vibrancy as we now have in Darien. So I implore you to not approve of this. Um, to think about the long term implications and and you're you're taking a step back from. A lot of good work that's taken a lot of effort from all of us. The other thing. Is that, you know, I don't think that this applicant has proven or his counsel has proven that. This space is not practical to be released as retail. I've heard that, you know, it wasn't possible. There's no retail demand. We've signed four leases with retail uses in the last 24 months, four in the last eight months in the midst of a pandemic. Um, two Darian Running Company, Plyables, Warm New York. And if you look at any of those uses, what you will see. Is that practically speaking. They don't demand a lot of parking because people are in and out. They're at Plyables. It's all young. Women, young girls under the age of 16, walking up with, you know, getting dropped off and moving around town, which is great to see. Uh, warm, there's one employee in there and, you know, a customer or two every hour. It's just, this has not been, this is, this space is leasable as retail. And I I would gladly offer to Mr. Glasband to help him. Um, we have 100,000 feet of first floor space that we're proposing or about to begin building across the street. If everybody that we're working with right now that's negotiating letters of intent with us and signs, we're 125% leased. So we have a space problem. I don't know what the problem is here, but this space is absolutely leasable as a retail space. And I I just would ask you to really think long and hard about it because if you allow this to happen in this one space. You, I believe, set yourself up for other people who just want to fill their space. And don't think about it too much. They'll fill their space with other office uses and really take us back. Five or 10 or 15 years. And I think that would be a shame after all the great progress we've made in downtown Darien. Thank you very much.
You. Carrie, want to go first? Carrie, you raised your hand for a reason.
Oh, I thought you said Harry. Sorry.
I thought it was Karen.
Um, when was the Darien revitalization revitalization committee? Holding their meetings and sort of coming up with their sort of ideas about. Revitalizing downtown and coming up with these concepts. Just trying to like.
2002, 2002, 2003.
Okay.
Um, and and as we got going, what happened was, and and some of you may remember, there was a way, Jeremy will definitely remember. There was a wave of bank interest in in retail locations. And that work that we did, some of the work that we did was a reaction to it because. The banks offered the best credit for a landlord at the highest rent. So. A lot of landlords did the economically rational thing and said yes to the bank. And so a lot of downtown spaces, you know, got taken up by banks. Um, First County opened up a new branch. Darian Rowatton Bank opened up a new branch. You know, Bankwell's now here, but that was a later stage thing. Uh, but it was 2002, 2003. And that was based on, that was not based on, you know, armchair experts, you know, giving the Planning and Zoning Commission their opinions on what Darien needed. That was based on. You know, a SWAT team of of land use and retail experts spending a lot of time with. All kinds of people in Darien from the Historical Society to zoning and. You know, interested residents and and really it was an incredible collaborative effort. If you haven't read. What they called the Darien Revitalization Resource Team Report, I would highly recommend it. It's still, you know, got a lot of valuable insights and I think it's almost in all, in some ways for downtown, it's almost more. Um, instructive or helpful, uh, than than the town plan of conservation and development because it's very specific as to. How to increase retail, uh, retail activity and how to increase walkability.
Okay, thank you.
Larry?
You know, no, so David, actually, I mean, we, I'm I'm glad you brought it up because I asked that question the previous meeting. I. Would have been one of the few you you actually weren't there, weren't around for. Um, and I'm glad you were at Ridgefield too, because I spent a lot of time in that downtown. They're an example that actually popped into my mind. When my kids are, you know, playing a football game in Ridgefield and we're, you know, we get from. We it's time to kill. And walk around Ridgefield or, you know, I can say the same thing about any of the towns I've been to for youth hockey all across New England. One of the things that seemed to make these towns walkable and fun. Is to go by all the real estate windows and look at the houses for sale in that area. And, you know, I, you know, obviously we're getting a bit of a. A real estate boom right now as as people are maybe taking the train out from the city to. To look around at what's available in Darien and. I I get the last specifically, what was, I've not read that report, which took 2002. But what what was specifically about real estate offices? As opposed to banks that kills the walkability in a downtown? Because my feeling was the opposite, to be frank.
Well, think about it this way. I look, I I we're, I'm a real estate geek. I I sense you might be too, Commissioner Warble. So I always look at this stuff and, you know, you go to the grocery store on vacation and you pick up the real estate magazine and flip through it. But look at it, look at it a different way. It's all a matter of, you know, um, how much is is right. And if. You have one real estate office with a billboard or a a display case, that's great. But what if there were six? What if there were five? You know, that's not interesting. And so, you know, the the retail planners would tell you. You want store displays that people want to walk by or restaurants where they walk by and they see their friends in the place. You know, again, if if you have one, I agree with you. It's kind of an interesting thing to check out and stop by. But if you have multiple, you know, multiple, uh, billboards, uh, so to speak, it's just not. People won't walk by those places. They'll stop and they'll get back in their car and they'll just drive. And that's. Literally like empirically proven by the shopping mall and urban retail, um, experts.
I mean, Alison, I I I'll chime in as someone in real estate and I do okay. Uh, I'm a top producer in the state. I appreciate that the displays are awesome, but as someone who is influential at Douglas Ellman and we've done very well during the pandemic and I'm, I feel very blessed. It's nice that you look at it. I totally like having real estate offices in town and I think Compass is amazing or, you know, similar to Ellman. But truly, I I don't think that since we have real estate offices in town, I mean, I wouldn't, I wouldn't be a proponent of Douglas Ellman taking that space. I think that you walk by, you like it. I've done zero deals with walk-ins, so I don't think it's exactly. The same as like going in and buying something like I don't, people aren't going in and be like to meet me there unless they have an appointment. And truly during COVID, I don't meet anyone at the office. And if you are a producer, you're not sitting at the office. And I assure you, there are. Agents that are sitting at the offices and taking up parking spaces all day, um, that aren't adding to the, like, the, um. The retail aspect like Kara has talked about of real estate, those people who are taking those spaces aren't the ones that are doing business because if you're in the office, you're not doing. What that sailing, that selling is, you should never be in the office if you're selling real estate. I mean, very infrequently or after 7:00 PM. Um, so I I don't, I I think our parking issue, the people who are going to be in the real estate office are going to be parked for a long time. And people like me who'd be using the real estate office, it wouldn't be for someone who's coming into downtown to make it more robust. Because it's, you know, I I I don't do a lot of transactions and I would say that across the board and Linley, who, you know, was on. I'm sure they could speak to that as far as how many walk-ins they're getting. It's just. It's just not what, real buyers are not looking at the window going, you know, that looks great. I'm going to call on that listing. They're going on Zillow. Even though I like it, I get what you're saying. I don't see how that's a long term add value because I actually think that moment in time. Has already started shifting. And although it's nice to look at. The retail aspect and that interaction between broker and client has changed so drastically that. That almost takes away from the argument, which I enjoyed, that we are selling a service that that, you know, that kind of interaction, people coming in, needing to sit down. I I don't, I did a lot of business and I have done a lot of business. I I just, I can't say that's really what goes on. With myself and probably any of the other top producers in town. So I don't see. I I don't know. I just, I get what you guys are saying in theory, but in practice, I don't see how that's adding value. There's not that interaction and that energy about selling or about the displays and we have, I don't know. I just, I just, I wouldn't, I wouldn't tell my own company to do that because I don't think we'd be an add value in that way. Second floor or promoting some, I I don't know, doing other things in town like in Greenwich. They've done a lot of real estate companies like Compass have done a lot of cool things that have been a major add value. I don't think taking space that could be a retail store where people are going in and out and supporting the local business is. That is a major value to me. And clearly, as Dave says, we have a lot of people who want to come in and will come into the store and support a local. Support a local business owner. I just, I don't know, that's. I just, I'm not, I I get in theory a lot of the points. I just think we have a parking problem and. Agents that are in the office are a parking problem because they stay all day.
Well, and they're, and to your point, they're they're taking away from parking. That would otherwise be used by people going into our local merchants and buying, you know, stuff, helping keep those guys, those team companies alive. And. Um, I think if this was on the second floor elsewhere or if it was. You know, off off the post road in in a less visible place, I think it'd be fine. Um, you know, as long as there was kind of a reasonable plan. By the landlord to to accommodate the parking and it wasn't all going to end up in other people's lots. Because there's no, there's no municipal parking near this office either. So there's no. There's nowhere other than street parking and there's very little street parking over there. There's no municipal parking nearby or adjacent. So it's it's a different, it's a different kind of a situation. Old Kings Highway South. Um, is very different. I don't see, I don't see that the William Ravis application has anything to do with this. So I I think those are all just kind of red herrings, honestly.
Okay, uh, Lindley.
Hi, it's me again. Um, and I just want to piggyback on a couple of things that have already been said. Um, you know, talking about the viability of downtown. Um, you know, people don't park and visit multiple real estate offices at a time, but they park and visit multiple stores at a time. So I think that's something that we should definitely be, you know, striving to. And then just again, to go over the parking, I did a little.
Linda, can you interrupt one second? Can you just tell me your address and affiliation for the record?
Yeah, I'm William Pitt Sotheby's. I'm 1057 Post Road.
Great, thank you. Sorry.
Yeah, that's okay. Um, after our, the last meeting, and I know that there was a lot of discussion about parking. We do have a a private lot behind our building and, um, you know, obviously it was a slower time of the year. We're still going through. The pandemic, but it was also the holidays. We have 12 dedicated parking spaces behind the building. On average, a third, excuse me, a quarter of those every day was used by someone who was not coming into our office. Um, you know, obviously. Holidays neighborly, we're not just sitting there towing people, but just to put in perspective. That a quarter of those spaces in a downtime are not being used by people who are coming in to transact business. Um, with respect also, just real quick to Mr. Maslin, the 22 Grove Street was our back office. Um, prior to the March of 2016, when we, our lease expired. Um, but that was back office support. And again, there was a shared parking lot in between the two buildings. Um, so that was how we were able to compensate for that. Again, I agree with everything that Jennifer and David have said. Larry, I totally get the idea of the displays, but if you look also in in downtown Darien at any of the offices. I can't think of a single one, um, unfortunately that I'm aware of that has those walkable displays. That you're talking about like they do in Ridgefield and, um, New Canaan and certainly other towns. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Would anybody else like to speak to this application? I think, um, seeing none, are we in a position to close? Were anything outstanding?
Nothing outstanding. I don't know. Bob has, looks like Bob has something to add.
Can I just finish with a couple of comments?
The applicant always gets the last call.
Oh, thanks. The downtown revitalization, I didn't participate directly in it. I was familiar with it. It was in the early 2000s. As was mentioned. But we are two Plan of Conservation and Development later. And if there was really, uh, an ongoing policy. That springboarded from downtown revitalization revitalization. I would think there would have been mentioned in at least. The 2006 Plan of Development specifically addressing. Businesses, business and professional offices on the first floor. But it's that language is not even, it's it's not in the plan. There was language mentioned. In the 1999. Uh, denial of the Prudential Wheeler application. Uh, citing to the 1995 Plan of Development, but that language has not appeared since 1995. The other thing that's worth mentioning is that you have regulations that allow things. And if it's truly a policy. That no business or professional offices be permitted on the first floor. Then the regulation should say that. If if the policy or the intent is. Not to have such, uh, uses on the first floor along the Post Road. The regulation could say that. But what's happened is the door was left open for an applicant to come in. With a special permit requirement. That, uh, would lead one to believe that it's possible to get an approval and it's not fair. For applicants, uh, to go through all of that and then come in and find out, well, there's a policy. Well, it's not what's in the regulation. The other thing that's worth mentioning is. I remember quite clearly. The concern about bank branches moving into downtown. And that concern, I think, was brought to a head when. The Darien Rowatton Bank was built, uh, same time. Del Setti's, uh, was built. First County was built at about the same time. And for a while. Those types of uses were were not permitted. Or if they were, they were permitted, uh, in a very narrow way. But since then, and more recently. Bankwell was was permitted to go in as a bank branch. Well, if. There's an equal intent to prohibit. Offices from first floors downtown. It should also apply to to banks. And yet Bankwell, albeit by by changing the regulation, I think the financial offices on the first floor were just outlawed completely until the regulation changed. But they've they've come back into a permitted use in the CBD. In the subarea. Business and professional offices and financial are allowed on the first floor by special permit. Without having to make a finding that retail is not practical. So what we have is a regulation that leaves the door open for applications like this. It's the town plan of development that's most recently issued and current. That guides the commission. Uh, to a greater extent than a non. Plan of Conservation Development Planning Document that's 15 plus years old. Um, and and so. The talk about the intent back in the early 2000s, it was certainly valid. I remember those days. Um, and I was involved in some of the applications that probably triggered some of those concerns. I remember Bob Harold mentioning it to me one day, a former first electment. But right now we deal with the with the application under the regulation and the town plan that. Is in place today. And, um, I I think we've met the, uh, requirements. Now, with respect to parking. There's a lot of discussion about parking. As I mentioned before, if this use is on the second floor in the same building. Then. The same parking issues exist. But we're not in a special permit. So it never gets to the commission. It never gets.
Yeah, but.
Point where there's public comment on it.
But. Can I ask you something? Doesn't the current plan of conservation development speak about walkability? And just having the desire and wanting to promote. Pedestrian friendly downtown and. And just having the desire and wanting to promote pedestrian friendly downtown and walkability? So I get, I definitely completely hear your point about, you know, the revitalization was sort of a committee and it doesn't have the authority or the sort of um, weight and how it should be considered as regulation does and precedent and the planned towning of conservation development. But I think the plan, the most recent one does speak about the desire and wanting to encourage walkability and pedestrian friendly areas, especially in the downtown area and then the Rothen Heights area, right?
It does. It also talks about resiliency and it talks about openness to new uses, additional. It has that as well and there's a balance.
I think it's a good point.
If you've ever been to Ridgefield, and I know Commissioner Warble has, if you go up to Main Street in Ridgefield on any fair weather day during daylight, there are literally dozens of people walking up and down Main Street. They're either going out for a walk, they're walking their pets or they're shopping. But it, it's a very, very pedestrian friendly strip. And Darien is getting that way too, but I don't think a real estate office is, is going to negatively impact walkability at all. Um, they are in, in areas where there's plenty of pedestrian activity. New Canaan has them. Ridgefield's got them. There are such offices, we have a couple of them on the post road we've already talked about here. Um, and then the other thing I wanted to mention on parking is oddly enough in the, uh, a decision that approved the William Pitt Sotheby application, uh, when they expanded their building, it contains the following statement in paragraph three. Significant off-street parking exists in direct proximity to the site, including a municipal parking lot one block away on Grove Street. Well, this space we're talking about is closer to that Grove Street lot than the William Pitt Sotheby uh, office by a couple of storefronts and a driveway. So if it's okay to say there's plenty of parking, including municipal, a block away for Sotheby, then why not say the same thing? For this, for this particular space. And then finally on parking, all of the parking in this area that's municipal. Um, as I understand it, along the street is all timed, two hour limit. So you can't have agents sitting in their office taking up a parking space that would otherwise be used by a, a temporary retail shopper if you have two, two hour parking limits. Permit parking could be available anywhere where, uh, where it exists. Um, Grove Street Lot, um, the lot, um, Center Street, uh, you know, to the extent permits are available. The commission historically has used permitting as a way to, uh, ensure, um, adequate parking or rather, uh, limit uses taking up parking that would be available for, um, business visitors on a short-term basis for an hour or two, or people shopping for an hour or two. And, and just as an aside, I bought my wife a Christmas present at the Darien Sports Shop and I walked from my office to the sports shop and back. And that's quite a hike because I'm here on Old Kings Highway South. So I, I just don't see the negative effect on pedestrian activity. I, I agree that Ridgefield has a very pedestrian friendly. I don't know what the real issues are up there, but I just don't see it when I drive up there. Um, and I think we've covered all the other issues. So with that, I'll, uh, put my, uh, turn my machine off here and finish up. And thank you for your, uh, attention and consideration of this application.
Okay, thank you, Bob. I think we're done. I think we're ready to go. Um, I got a couple of things to add, but we go to talk about deliberation. That's fine. Okay, I would adjourn motion to close this application. Jennifer was the proposer. Can I look for a second? Karen Gately and Jim, was in favor? Okay, application's closed. Thank you. Who we got? Next item on the agenda. I'm not something off the list, Jim, sorry. Uh, next I'm up here. Special permit application number 319 Mathnasium of Darien. Uh, 1082 Boston Post Road proposal to temporarily relocate Mathnasium of, of Darien from 10 Carbon Drive to 1082 Boston Post Road during the redevelopment of the north side of Corbin Drive as part of the Corbin Project. The subject property is located on the southeast side of Boston Post Road, approximately 175 feet south of its intersection with Corbin Drive and is shown, and is shown on assessment about number 72 as lot 20 in the, um, C, in the CBD CS zone, which means Corbin Sub District. This is Mathnasium, which is on Corbin Drive, and they want to move to the, um, old Coldplay Store. That's the Cryo Vex Store. We go with, it's been closed since the beginning of the pandemic.
Across from the movie theater.
Across from the movie theater, um, which that's not a real retail use. Tonight, I think we have David Genovese presenting this application. I don't know if he's represented by counsel or not, but we'll find out. Jeremy, what am I missing?
Uh, this is, Mathnasium is considered a personal service use, which requires a special permit in the CBD Corbin Sub Area. So David Genovese is here on behalf of the proposed tenant. Talk a little bit about how it all works, hours, employees, how they meet the special permit requirements outlined in the Corbin Sub Area Regulations.
Did we want to, just one second, David, if you don't mind. Should I read the other one at the same time?
No, they're actually two different sites.
Okay. Okay.
Okay.
Genovese, floor is yours, sir.
So, um, joining me momentarily, if not already on, uh, will be Gage DiDimitris, uh, who's the, uh, principal of Dynamic Martial Arts and David Lubner, who's the principal of Mathnasium. Um, so for, let's tackle Mathnasium first. Uh, phase one of the Corbin Project is to basically take down the gas station, uh, the, the Wyckoff Building, which has Mathnasium and Dynamic Martial Arts and it now into the Tibbetts Building. Over the course of the last few months, I think you're aware, we, we relocated the drainage culvert that ran along the parking lot between 1020 Post Road and those buildings, uh, working with the DEP, the EPA and the Army Corps of Engineers. So that work's been done. Which then allows us to proceed to technically phase two. Mathnasium, and we've been working very hard to try to relocate all these tenants, um, in connection with our work. And I'm happy to say we found a home for everybody, uh, working together with Jeremy and, and all of you. These are the last, well, two of the last three that we have to relocate. Um, we found a place for the Tibbetts Law Firm. Um, so we're working on the details of that right now. They'll be moving to a location outside of the CBD, but in Darien. And then, uh, for Mathnasium, uh, we're proposing to move them into the, uh, former Coldplay Cryotherapy Space. In, on Corbin Drive at 15 Corbin Drive, they lease 1,800 square feet. Due to COVID, they're using less, uh, square footage. They don't need as much square footage. They're doing Zoom classes and online tutorials, which they hadn't done before. Um, so they would fit in a thousand square feet. Um, the idea here is to move them temporarily into the Coldplay Space. Um, and then, uh, upon completion of phase one, to move them back to the, one of the new buildings in approximately the same location that they're in today. They are, uh, open Monday through Thursday, three to eight PM, Saturdays from two to six. Um, during COVID, they were open less frequently, less often. Um, they have two to three employees on site. Four students begin appointments on, on the hour each day and four on the, on the half hour each day. And the students are mostly dropped off. So there's very little parking associated with the students visiting the site. We own, I'm just gonna, if you can see my screen, I'm just gonna quickly flip to something you didn't see in the previous application. Um, this is actually a floor plan for Mathnasium. An open workstation, a private workstation and an office.
David, right now we have on, um, your Instagram, um, front page.
Oh.
It's a really cool bunch of teddy bears. There you go.
How's that? Is that better?
Make it a little bit bigger. Got it. We have this in your application packet.
Yeah, I just want to show you, this is the, um, a, a picture from pre-COVID of the various buildings around the Corbin, the, the second phase of the Corbin Project. Mathnasium is located, or Coldplay Cryotherapy and Mathnasium would be located here. We've subsequently taken down all these buildings and created this very significant parking lot. Which will be available to, um, any of the businesses in that location now. So, um, we basically created this parking lot for construction purposes. The idea is that this back triangular piece will be cordoned off and used by the construction workers during phase one. And then this other area will be available to, uh, customers and employees of the various businesses on the post road. I put in here as well in your package, just the signage proposal. We'll have to take that to ARB. But we think it's a pretty straightforward application. It's a temporary thing and it allows us to keep Mathnasium in business in Darien. Uh, David Lubner's been here for a while. He's got a good following. Um, and he's been super constructive working with us, you know, in, in relocating and having to move again. So um, that's basically my presentation on Mathnasium. Happy to answer any questions anyone may have.
My, my, it's, it's, it's the elephant in the room, but my million dollar question, how long do you think they'll be there? Is it, you know?
Eighteen months.
Got it. Perfect.
I mean, the idea is that, you know, we, we build phase one in, in 14 to 18 months. The retail tenants go in first, first floor tenants. We may be doing the apartments, the apartment construction while the retail reopens. But we are pretty incented to get the people into those first floor spaces so we can take down the Bank of America building and all the buildings on the post road.
Yep. Okay, I'm good. Seems pretty straightforward to me. Um, any questions from any commissioners? I don't see anybody's green light, huh? George Riley, your light is on.
Just wondering, um, with all that parking in the rear of these buildings, is there access? Will there be access to Mathnasium through the rear of this building?
Uh, there is, there is Commissioner Riley.
Presentable access, not kind of the, the way the storage would be handled or anything?
Um, I think you can see here, there's a doorway, uh, right here into the back hallway. So the expectation is that people will be dropped off on the post road, but there is access from the back if people want to use that.
Yeah, dropping off. I, I gather there could be four students at a time. So that's four cars having to do that perpendicular parking and, um, that's.
Yeah, it's not great.
No, I think they're gonna prefer, maybe to come around to the back, but anyway, okay.
Yeah, yep.
And there's two ways to get it to that back parking lot. One, direct access from Corbin Drive and the other direct access from the alley that's off to Post Road.
That's correct. Actually, yeah, yeah.
To the, um, the shoe shop guy. So you get there from both ways. Thank you, George. Anybody else? Any other commissioners? Seeing none, um, with the, anyone for the general public like to speak to this application? Tell me if you see anybody, Fred. I don't see anybody either.
We have no one.
Great, okay. Um, that being said or not said, uh, it's an emotional close, this public hearing. Karen Gately, Jim Rand seconds. Was in favor? Great, thank you. Mathnasium is done. Mathnasium's going to Coldplay's done, right? Next item up for bid. Um, special application permit, uh, some, special permit application number 300 A's in Apple, Dynamic Martial Arts. Uh, 1540 Boston Post Road proposal to permanently relocate Dynamic Martial Arts to 1,017 square foot portion of the second floor space of 1540 Boston Post Road. The subject property is located on the east side of Boston Post Road, approximately 300 feet north of its intersection with Quirky Me. And it's shown on assessment map number, uh, 41 as lot 141 in the OB zone. These are the two buildings. Um, they're actually two buildings together, which are directly across street from the library or pretty much across street from the library. We approved this space at one point in time to be the Fitch School. Um, Fitch did not let him go in there. They moved to another stuff. The NOLA Physical Therapy is on the ground floor and next door to the other building, I think they have the entire building is Lynda Mood Bell. Um, tonight, I think we have David Genovese again presenting the application. Jeremy, what am I missing?
I think the only thing I just wanted to correct is, uh, with the re, various rezoning the commission did a few years ago. We combined all our office zones into one office zone. So this is now the designed office zone, which is, as you've acknowledged, uh, 1574, there's two buildings next to each other. So this is the DO zone. It's okay, David. No big deal. I'll let David.
As you, as you probably sensed from the last hearing, I think I need a new zoning attorney. So, um, you know, I did this one on my own. I'm prone to make mistakes.
So that's just a typo in, that's just a typo in our thing though.
Yeah.
All right. That's not your fault. It's, that's our legal notice. Jim Rand's fault. He signed it. Jim Rand's name is in the paper. That's his fault. Sorry, David. Go right ahead, sir.
No problem. So similar situation and effort, uh, part of the same effort, Dynamic Martial Arts is a tenant of 19 Corbin Drive since 2008. We, um, have been, had a, had a nice relationship with Gage. He's beloved in town, has a great practice. Lots of students, um, same sort of a situation. His students tend to be a little bit younger, so the drop off is very much, uh, the dominant uh, feature of how students get to class and get picked up. With me also on this call is Jason Gramelski, who is the owner of NOLA and the principal of, uh, the building, the company that owns the building, 1540, 1574 Boston Post Road Realty. Jason has done a phenomenal job renovating this building. He has, um, second floor spaces, uh, there. We tried to actually put uh, Mathnasium next to Dynamic Martial Arts in the same building, but, uh, the franchise requirements of, um, Mathnasium really wanted them to be on the first floor. So that wasn't going to work. But Gage likes this space. It's bright and cheery and new. Jason gets a new tenant and this is a permanent, uh, permanent relocation. So this is not meant to be a temporary relocation. Going to the details, uh, Gage has between one and two employees on site at any time. What the, if there's one, it's usually him. Um, and, uh, they have eight to 10 students on any, at any time on average, pre-COVID. Um, things have been different lately. He's done outdoor classes and some Zoom classes and so on, but it'll likely end up being about the same, hopefully. And we will also have to do a signage, uh, presentation to ARB. But we think it's a great fit. Um, it's complimentary to the other uses in this area between, um, Lynda Mood Bell and NOLA Physical Therapy, where a lot of high school athletes, student athletes train. Um, lots of drop off and, um, you know, just a really, we think it's a great use. And Jason will be a great, uh, landlord to this company and, um, we get to help Gage stay in Darien.
Okay, and this will be on the second floor.
This would be on the second floor, on the post road side of the building.
But so they might have, well, signage isn't really our issue, but they'll have said, I think Noah's got a really cool sign on the roof. You can see. So this will be above Noah. Okay. Um, got it. Any commissioners have any questions with regards to this one? Kara shaking her head, no. Larry's, he's good. Jim Rand's very quiet tonight. He's good. George Riley, he's fine too. Um, I think we, we kind of get it, David. This one's kind of simple and it's nice of you to be quote unquote, the broker that moves these people. Yeah, I appreciate the effort, that's for sure. Finding homes for everybody. We know the building, we know the space. Everyone's driven by it, second floor. There's not a lot of people gonna hang out and watch their kids drop off. And if COVID ever comes back, they could probably put a tent in their own parking lot that they have now, like they're doing in the other space. With that being said, would anybody from the general public or does your, um, tenant or landlord want to say anything, David?
Jason, you have any comments?
No, nothing.
Jesus, smart. There you go. Larry, you're good. You just turned your light on.
Oh. Um, no, I was just thinking how interesting it would be if we had a nice, you know, a martial, a children's martial arts center right next to say like a candy store so that they, kids would get hopped up on sugar and come walking down the street with their Kung Fu skills. That'd be so much fun.
They can go up or down the block after they go to Shake Check and get a nice.
No questions.
Uh, no one from the public say anything? So with that being said, um, and Larry's comments, I would adjourn motion to close this hearing. Kara, is that you motioning? Is that you going? That's you motioning. I thought so. Anybody else? I need a second. Anybody else, I need a second? George Riley, you're in the game? There you go, that's the second, all in favor? Hearing's closed, Mr. Genovese and Mr. Jason, we will get you an answer at our next meeting.
Terrific, thank you so much for your time.
Thank you, sir. That is the end of our public hearings tonight. Now we're gonna move into the general meeting portion of the application. What do we have, a general portion of the application? Okay. Ah, we have another free comply, you said goodbye to that meeting, is it come to the next meeting?
No, but there's very good news for you, Commissioner Olavini, Chairman Olavini.
I noticed we have Kate Perez showed up.
Yes, for this presentation, you will be relieved of me and Kate Perez, who's really the brains of our operation, is going to present to you on behalf of the team.
All right, so you can turn your camera off there.
Exactly.
Amendment to the business, amendment of business site plan application number three oh two, special permit application number three oh two. Corbin District, Boston Post Road, Corbin Drive, CBD, CBD CS Zone. Review and action on the alternate sign program for the Corbin District pursuant to section nine three five B, category one of the Darien zoning regulations. This is when we did the Nuroten High Chop Center and the Corbin District. We said that as a unit and also federal, right, same thing? As a unit, these guys come up with their own signage plans if they want to. As long as they're all together and they're same business, they can make their own signs, so it's, it's more uniform. It looks to me like the Corbin District went to ARB.
They did.
And reviewed everything, so Jeremy, why don't you tell us what else happened?
As part of the new sign regulations, there was a provision which allows for kind of a comprehensive sign program for pedestrian oriented businesses or uses like the large projects Steve referenced. The Corbin District went to ARB, you have a copy of the ARB report in your packets. And David sent over earlier what Kate Perez is gonna show you tonight. And run through for you what was presented to ARB. And basically, as part of the sign rights, the commission, planning and zoning commissions just also got to approve this as part of the sign approval. So it's, it's one of the provisions of the sign regulations. This is a little bit new, but I think the commission find is very interesting to understand the concepts they used in putting together their project and what they expect going forward.
So mechanically, the way it works is ARB approves it and then we get to approve it.
Yes.
Or we can deny it, and then it goes back to the drawing board. Looks like you went to ARB three times, Kate. Kate Perez, take it away.
Okay, this is Kate Perez from Baywater Properties. Thank you for taking the time to go through this with us. So we went before ARB at the October meeting and the December meeting to talk about a district signage program. I think you have hard copies of the, the signage program, I'm also just trying to pull it up here. There's a lot of detail in the package by tenant type, by location in the project. But, but I can just sort of walk through the big picture of why we're proposing this program. And I'll pull up the site plan. So, you know, as I think everyone knows, the Corbin Project is a pretty large triangular site. And one of the reasons why we thought it was appropriate to put forward a district signage program is that some of the tenants in the project will have a hundred, hundred and fifty foot, even two hundred foot distance off of a public road, whether it's the Post Road or Corbin Drive. So you can see in the, in the anchor tenant portion that we're proposing anchor tenant like building F that's over a hundred feet from the Post Road get, will be allowed a slightly larger text size up to twenty-four inches as opposed to their regulated twenty inches. And that, and that tenants, you know, the other sort of aspect of this aside from just distance from the road that's unique to the project is we have, you know, I think every one of the, the buildings in the Corbin Project is a three hundred and sixty degree building where there really is no back of house or alley or you know, service sort of side, which is great from a pedestrian perspective. Because whether you're looking at the building from Corbin Drive or the parking lot, you know, you can sort of engage with, with entrance, with the public entrances and signage. So the frontage on a public road for some of these inline tenants is not, you know, super wide. It's, you know, it's twenty feet, thirty feet, forty feet. And so as part of this program, we're proposing that interior private roads and public plazas are counted towards the linear square footage for the signage, so that some of these inline tenants are able to have a front door on Corbin Drive as well as a pedestrian entrance from the parking lot where many of their visitors may be parking. So, you know, that's another sort of piece of the Corbin Project that we feel is a little bit different than a typical downtown street lining retail. And, you know, the other piece that differs from the town signage regulations is the addition of blade signs. So we're proposing that each tenant is allowed a blade sign outside of their required or their signed square footage dictated by their linear square footage or their linear frontage. So we feel like it's a really important scaling aspect to the buildings to have that extra layer at a lower height. And so, you know, we feel between blade signs and the street furniture and the street trees, we really want to create a lot of activity and, you know, a pedestrian friendly sidewalk realm. And so, you know, we want to encourage people to have a blade sign where they might otherwise favor putting all of the square, signage square footage towards a wall sign. And aside from that, the package references the town signage regulations on most other points. And, you know, especially with these anchor tenants or unique lighting situations in our meetings with ARB, we discussed that, you know, there are certain circumstances where signage would be brought back to ARB because, you know, it falls out of these proposed guidelines and it's a special circumstance that, that would really make, be impactful from a public road. So that, that's sort of the, the summary of, of the, like, the technical parts of, of what's being requested in the package. And, you know, I think the, the last piece is really just creating kind of a holistic vision and aesthetic. There are some, you know, parts of this package that say that the signage needs to be in keeping with the architectural character of the building and support the aesthetic goals of the project. And so we just want to be careful, it's, you know, to, to kind of make sure that the project as a whole is, is coming together and that we're, we're being mindful of how it's working with the architecture of the buildings. And I think that's, that's pretty much it. And, you know, I have a lot of detail on each tenant type, but I just want to jump to, jump to the end where we have a couple of renderings of proposed or prospective retail tenants. So, you know, the reason we're going through this program now is as we're having discussions with potential tenants, it's really helpful to show them potentially the types of signage they can have. And for many tenants, especially Bank of America, who we've been working with on, on their signage, it's, you know, it's really important to them that the signage that's on the Post Road or on Corbin Drive. And so being able to, to put some vision to, you know, what their spaces could potentially look like for, for these tenants is, is really important to them and really helps, helps us, you know, sort of sell to them the vision of what their space could look like. So full disclosure on this Barry's rendering, I don't think that this sign size would be allowed under our proposed program, so we have a little tweaking to do there. But, but just to kind of give you a sense of these are the types of renderings we're putting together to, you know, as we sort of work with prospective tenants.
Thank you. A couple of threshold questions. With regards to buildings that are on corners, whether it be an interior corner or a street corner, is the proposal to have two blade signs and one wall sign? Is that what I'm, I'm kind of seeing that throughout the, the packet? But when I read this, where it says corner, I didn't really see that, there is three wall signs?
Yep. So a corner tenant we're proposing could have up to three wall signs, one per facade. So we have a few corner tenants that only have, you know, that are truly a corner, you know, two facades. And then there are a few tenants that have three facades that are sort of terminating the end of a building. And so in that case, and I can actually just pull up one example that we've been talking to a restaurant group about. So this corner, this sort of three-sided corner space here. If someone is driving in this private road, they're able to see some, you know, signage here. And, you know, we feel like from this pedestrian way and the pedestrian plaza, really on, you know, you would want visibility or some indication of the tenant from each of these three sides. And a tenant with, a corner tenant would be allowed to blade signs under the proposed program. So this, this is just one example, you know, with the little blue rectangles of what that tenant would be allowed in terms of square footage.
So it, so that tenant, for example, that corner which is a three-sided building, it looks like, do they get two additional blade signs too?
They would have two, two blade signs in addition to three, or they would be allowed up to two blade signs on top of three wall signs or one, you know, one per facade.
So they get, they technically get five signs, that's a lot of signs. Okay. And, and, and just also, I read it in your, your packet, and I don't know if that's in the, any regulations. All these signs have to be approved by the landlord before they even come to anybody, right? But are we ever gonna see them again? We never see them again, right? Because we don't want to get involved in any of this.
Right. And then the details would be worked out between the landlord, presumably Mr. Genovese, and ARB if necessary.
Right, because I mean, the last thing we need to do is see signs for fifteen different tenants that are coming into this thing. At least fifteen different tenants. So in, in, in that one example, you get three wall signs and two blade, two blade signs. Which is like, in your, in your pictures in the back, the Compass Building's got two blade signs. Which one, there was another one that had two blade signs, I saw.
Millie's?
Millie's, Millie's is not in our packet, that one, that one did make.
Yeah, the, those ones I just added. It just popped in, yeah.
You want to go over the, the artwork stuff, we don't really care. We're approved that in concept, that's case by case basis. This is the rendering you have here on page eighteen, that's outside of, what's it, it's a gin and tonic, it's.
Green and tonic?
Green and tonic, I'm used to gin and tonics, okay. So that was approved by ARB, we never saw that, right? That was, that was, I think it was. And then the other one, the other big threshold question I have, and, and I apologize if it slipped through, because I remember it's, it's got to be my fault. What are we doing about waypoint signs and parking signs? Because like where thirty-four Old Kings Highway is, there was a little dinky small sign with a P on it and a circle. That sign I think is gone now, but I still think that's gonna be a rear entrance to the parking lot. Is that a different presentation, is that a different day?
I would think that's worked out, I would think that'd be worked out with, like, the Board of Selectmen as the parking authority and the ARB.
Yeah, they're looking, they're looking for you to help them. We, we had, Jamie and I had that, the conversation. And it was, it was after the fact, after the thirty-four Old Kings Highway new building got approved. And I thought you might have talked about that in, in here, but I mean, again, this is really for tenants.
But we haven't, we have not figured out yet, you know, parking wayfinding for, for the, the second phase, the big part of the project, the, the larger phase. But I, I think that, I, I would think that would be kind of handled as kind of a, it's either ARB, ARB and the Board of Selectmen or it's technically all private parking, so maybe it's not actually Board of Selectmen, just ARB.
But it's really.
We'll take, we'll take your guidance on that, whatever you think is best is fine with us.
I just, I, I just want your help on that, because I know the little green sign with a P on it that's now gone, where thirty-four Old Kings Highway entrance was, there's an access easement back there? That's going to the municipal lot and your lot, because it, I think those two things go together.
Well, yeah, well, if that got taken away, we'll make sure it's back. I, I didn't see that actually, so that's a good point, and, and we'll make sure it's replaced.
Okay, but we want, I mean, the part of this whole parking discussion is it's, we, the park, we have the parking that we have, right? But when you build your parking garage for Phase, I mean, you want to call it Phase Two, call it Phase Three, whatever you want to call it. Phase two B, or whatever it is, you're gonna have waypoint signs for tenants to get it into those parking spaces, right? Into the quote-unquote parking garage? So is, is that, is that gonna be a different application?
Kate, what do you think?
I think that will be a different application to ARB, because we also, in this package, we're saying, you know, monument signs would, would go to ARB on a case by case basis. And I think parking, you know, that corner of the private road where it meets Corbin Drive, we will, sorry, where it meets the Boston Post Road, we will absolutely have to have some sort of wayfinding indicating the, the above grade, you know, parking area and below grade, you know, off of Corbin Drive. And I think we probably would handle those as a holistic kind of parking signage package, maybe with ARB.
Okay, like, do you, do you envision? When I was at a building today, it was, it was an industrial park up in Poughkeepsie. All the tenants are way in the back, and there's, there's a huge sign out on the front row that says, you know, all these tenants are in there, and it lists like eighty-seven tenants.
No, I don't, I don't think we're gonna do that. I don't think we're gonna do that.
Okay.
I think the idea here is to get people kind of walking around and moving around and, you know, by picking the right tenants and, you know, encouraging people to, we're, we're thinking a lot about who goes next to what. I mean, to that point earlier, I think it was Commissioner Warble about the karate studio next to the ice cream store or whatever. I mean, we're like talking to a cookie, a cookie retailer that would go next to Barry's Bootcamp and Joyride, I mean, there's.
You're supposed to do that, yeah, that's, that's.
But you won't feel as guilty, you won't feel as guilty eating the cookies.
Shopping Center one oh one. Okay, so those are my two things, was the waypoint signs. The, the landlord's gonna approve everything before it goes any further, so you kind of sort of enforce this. And then the three, that, that, some tenants could end up having five signs, which is one of all three facades and two blade signs. But if it's overkill, you guys can decide, we don't need to. Commissioners, any questions, raise your hand, turn your light on. George Riley, your light is on, sir.
Oh, good, but nobody help, no, here I am, and I am wondering, as to anchor tenants and Ms. Perez, you're page sixteen, the question is raised by the Patagonia sign on top of this building. Are you going to have signage higher than basically the first floor? I don't see any description of such, but why is the Patagonia sign shown there?
For the retail signage that would be covered by this package, everything would be at a ground floor level. The only tenants who would potentially have signage above the ground floor level would be the anchor tenants located in building F. Sorry, I'm just flipping back. Sort of in the center of the development, closest to I ninety-five. And building D at the corner of the Post Road and the off-ramp. Sort of in the center of the development, closest to I ninety five, and building D at the corner of the post road and the off ramp. And if those tenants wanted senate, uh, signage above the ground floor level, I think that would have to go to um, ARB.
But I would tell you that as we've sketched, as we've sketched out those um, renderings, and we're working with tenants on both of those spaces right now. Just anecdotally, as we've sketched out the renderings, they, the signage has been on the first floor.
Right, okay, but are, are you proposing any regs about that, or um, I mean, the only one I can think of in town probably is the Darian Sports Shop. That is uh, prominent and commercial and all that sort of thing, but. So there must be, whether that was a, a. A zoning um. Special permission or something around, I don't know, but.
I think, I think in this case, like the, the, the image Kate showed of Patagonia, I mean, the reason I think it's, it's on the second floor there is because that's a two floors. Two floor store, in the same way that the sports shop is a multiple floor store. Um, in our case, all of the retail tenants are on the first floor only. So I, I don't envision we're going to want something on an upper floor, but you know. If, if we, if it comes, if it comes to be that someone is demanding it, and it's a tenant that we think is appropriate and. It's important, we think it makes sense, we'll, we'll re-present it then, but that's not in our, our list of, of.
Okay, and you don't have in mind some big bold display of Corbin District or the Genovese Building or something?
No, definitely, definitely not a Genovese, definitely no Genovese building. Uh, we would like to try to find a place to put that, the kind of, you know, sim- like the uh. Iconic Corbin logo, but we haven't figured it out yet.
Iconic. What about Penny Lane?
That may be the main street.
As a follow-up to George's question, is there going to be any signage in building D that faces I ninety five?
At this point, we don't think so.
Okay.
That would have to come to the commission, and that, I think that would be, you know, that's a tough conversation. I don't. I don't think Darian has historically allowed any signage to face I ninety five. The mini dealer, uh, Whole Foods kind of looks toward ninety five, but.
Right, BMW. Yeah, no, I did, I, we talked about that, this five years ago. I just wanted to make sure we're on the same page.
Well, I, so Jeremy, I'm, I'm curious, is there some requirement that they come back? I hear the willingness to come back, but is there a requirement? Somebody twenty years from now, then David's running the shop?
No, uh, there'd be no need for them to come back to the commission once this uh.
No, he's talking about the variance, he's on the second floor side of.
Second floor signage, George?
Yeah.
Yeah, I think it would be different enough, he'd have to come back. Certainly, uh, what Steve mentioned is. The zoning regs do not let any signage face I ninety five, so that would need a variance from the zoning board of appeals to do that. But uh, so certainly, uh, what David has shown is, is fine, and then if he wants to change that going forward.
What Kate has shown.
Uh, what Kate has shown, uh, for second floor retail signage, we need. ARB and Planning and Zoning Commission, but anything facing I ninety five would need zoning board.
Okay, so anything above the first floor would, would, should come back to P and Z, that, you think that's in the reg somewhere, okay.
Does Merrill Lynch have a second floor over the post road?
I think they do.
Kate, do you know that one?
Kate, you have an image of it on the cover, I think.
I do, it's um, it's a, I think it's on the ground floor, it's just high up, uh, yep.
On the post roadside that, that um, that broker from CBRE required you to have.
That sign was taken away.
Was it really? Okay.
Yeah.
All right. It was at one point in time in his life, right?
It was, it was in the, in the beginning, but it was, you know, it really wasn't visible, and that was part, that was a variance um, application years ago that uh, we discussed with the town.
And and going back to Alf Flapone, he used to have a sign on the second floor when he was over by um. Above, above Panera Bread.
The difference, I think, being there, that, that he occupied the second floor. So I think, you know, that is a little bit different in that there was a first floor retail tenant, Panera Bread, and he was on the second floor.
Well, so is Merrill Lynch.
True, true.
Right, so if you, if you occupy the second floor, you can put a sign on the second floor, but you still need a variance. We're just, I'm looking for the belt suspenders, that's all.
Yep.
We're not, we're not approving anything, nothing we can condition uh. On, uh, about the requirement of coming back if there's going to be. Higher signage? I guess not, all right, but do you think, Jeremy, you think it's going to be required?
Right, the regs specifically say, recommended by the ARB, and then approved by the commission by special permit. So certainly you can, someone can make a motion to approve the, the sign. Program as revised, as presented, with, with that condition, that if they make that type of change, they come back.
So the, the only thing is that, we're just making sure that you can't put signs on the second floor. If there's, if the Darian Sports Shops on the second floor above street level, can they put a sign over there?
There's only one, one of David's buildings that has.
What about if David doesn't own it five years from now?
So, yeah, with that condition, I think that would be okay, that would make sense. That's exactly what they present.
So that's why, Kate, that's what you presented, is that right? This is really only great, great level signs?
Correct, yep.
Okay, so if there is a retail tenant that wants to sign on the second floor, you got to go to either ARB or P or ZBA or somebody for that. Okay.
Well, A, ARB is different than ZBA and P and Z, obviously, in terms of their regulatory authority. They can advise on whether they think it looks nice, but. We would have the opportunity to say whether we want some commercial name, blades on a building that's prominent in town.
I actually think the regs, they can put, if a retail goes up there, they can put retail signs up there. Because don't the regs for this zone permit the signage to be determined by. The developer and the landlord. We're not involved in it. That's just my understanding, I could be wrong.
I, I think mechanically, it goes, if there's something going on on the second floor, it's going to go ARB first.
ARB does not have regulatory authority, they're just advised.
Understood, understood. Then it goes to ZBA.
But does it have to go to ARB?
I don't, I have to look at it, if it complies, it would come here, it doesn't comply with the regs, it would go to ZBA.
All right.
But do the regs not permit signs on second floors? I think they do.
That's the question.
I'd have to read through specifically, depending on.
In this zone, I think they do.
It wouldn't surprise me if they do. My finger on it right now.
But and then there's, but there's also no, it, it, in this zone, there's nothing that faces I ninety five, right? We never, we never would prove that. Okay.
That's different.
Right, all right, so.
So, uh, I don't know, I, I'm, I'm leaning toward uh, making a motion to approve this. Uh, conditioned on the requirement that uh, the. Whoever the appropriate party would be, come back to P and Z for any signage above the first level.
Is that possible? Because this is a general meeting, I don't. Does that sound okay by you, Kate?
Yep, that, that sounds good.
Okay, great. Um, any other questions from any other commissioners? We just heard from George, Jim Rand, yes, sir.
Yeah, I just, this may be a personal. Poible of mine, but. Just as an example, I went to buy a pair of shoes in the store, I wanted to buy from, from, in Westport. And the address was, I don't know, one twenty five Bain Street. But there are no numbers on the buildings. I went from the beginning to the end of Main Street and around that parking lot in the back. Three times before, because the signs are discreet, the short, the, the. Store names are discreet, and there's no numbers on the buildings. There's no numbers on the buildings in Darian either, for the most part.
You know, George, uh, Jim, it's, it's very much a very hot item with the ARB to make sure. That street addresses are prominent, uh, so almost every ARB recommendation letter. And at, at a lot of new tenants, you'll see the requirement from ARB that the street address be very prominent. Uh, even sometimes more so than the name of the business. Uh, having watched their meetings and read their recommendation letters, I can assure you that's first and foremost. Not only on the minds of the ARB members, but as a staff recommendation to applicants upfront. Look, this is what the ARB wants.
It's on page twenty one.
Yep, so.
If I live another eighty years, I'll get street, I'll get numbers on the buildings.
No, there's, there's an enforcer on the ARB now, who is very, very focused on this issue. And so, it's.
David, my, my question really is. The, the thing that brings it to mind is, when I'm looking for the number. I'm driving at ten miles an hour, and there's five cars behind me all honking. Now, you're on the post. And if, on page beginning, you're going to have people coming from out of town. Who are attracted by this big new development, what have you. And how are you going to tell them what's inside there? Are you just going to trust that they're going to drive in, park, and then start walking around and seeing what's, what's there?
Kate, can you flip to page twenty one? Their first item on that content? Sorry, catch it, be limited to business name, logo, and street address? Is that, is that limited to or required to have?
Uh, it's at a different point, page nineteen, I think.
Yeah, this was a recommendation by ARB. Address enforcer, so th- they asked that we add this piece that every tenant should have a clearly marked address. You know, within building H, you know, the sort of center building of the first phase, we do have a lot of inline tenants right in a row. So it's, it'll definitely be important for this project for everybody to have a discreet address.
Uh, there it is, I'm sorry, address shall be clearly marked at each storefront. There you go, Jim. So if you find ten twenty posts next door, a couple stores down, it's going to be ten twenty four. See that middle of the page, address?
Yeah, I see that, but I'm talking about the stores that are on the other side of Corbin.
Right, but that's, that, I asked that earlier, that was the, what I call a waypoint. If you go to like, if you go to the new um, Ridge Hill Mall, you pull into Ridge Hill Mall, it says Whole Foods that way, look this way. You know, I store that way. But Mr. Genovese said that they don't.
Like, right, that's a little different than that.
Which. I mean, look, it's, it's, it's his uh. Uh, it's his deal, I, I'm not going to argue with him, I, he's the professional, not me, but it just.
Got it. Okay. Anybody else? Questions, concern, comments? Larry, you good? George, we heard from? Jen, you still here?
Mr. Chairman, at what point would I make that motion I referenced earlier, to see if anybody would second it, et cetera?
I just want to hear if any other commissioner, any other questions, and then we can go to your motion. Jen, you good? Yep, okay, Larry's okay. Okay, George, you're up.
Okay, so I'm moving that the P and Z approved this uh, Corbin District signage program. Condition on a requirement that uh, the. Owner uh, or appropriate designee return to P and Z for approval of any signage above the first level.
Looking for a second. Jim Rand's a second. Jen's a third, okay. All those in favor of approving this size program with that condition? Larry, you said, yes, I can't see Larry's hand, Larry's hand, okay, great, all right, thank you. Kate, you did a great job. David, you have a great job, thank you.
Thank you all.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Appreciate it.
Right, moving on. Deli- deliberation, possible decision on two public hearing, I'm closed on November twenty fourth. First one is coastal site plan review number eighty hyphen A, landfill regaining application number. Um, four eighty nine, Timothy and Angela Riley. One, uh, two forty one Long Neck Point Road, proposed to build a new house. I think we have a draft resolution for the planning and zoning commission dated to uh, January fifth. Okay, this is the house of the vacant land that's right next door to the gates that go into the um. The end of Long Neck Point. It's, this one's on the other side of the gates, right?
Yeah, yon gates.
The other gates. Everything looked copacetic to me. The other, the other thing that jumped off the page was that the public carrier that in a matter of the grade of the property would not change by more than eighteen inches. It doesn't, doesn't some number trigger? Landfilling uh, application, or that was, that was the high school?
Usually twelve inches or twenty cubic yards. So in this case, when the applicant's representative said in no one. More than eighteen inches. It's not quite tricky.
Okay, and then the last thing that I had was um. This is in no way, shape, or form in a flood zone, so we don't need that as-built. Survey thing, right?
Uh, that's correct, there's no, no word going on.
Is, that's item B. We just need the asphalt survey. Okay, all right, I'm good. Yeah, good, okay. Most to approve as submitted. George Riley, look for a second, that was Jen? Yeah, all in favor? Eyeball. Six, nothing, okay, great. As written. Next item up for bid, this is right along, uh, coastal site plan review number. But he's, that's, I think that might be you, Fred, or no? Coastal site plan review number three fifty two, landfill regaining application number uh, four ninety, Mike Kling. Two thirty seven Long Neck Point Road. This is the house site that's right next to the one we just approved a minute ago. This is on the other side of the gates, they're knocking down the house, knocking down a shed. Keeping the garage that's not conforming the road, rebuilding the pool, the same exact spot. This is where it's got the fire pit thing that we turned it ninety degrees.
Yes.
Um, I thought it was forty five. But this one hundred percent says ninety degrees, and that is. Or yeah, number A result. Um, that was the only condition in here. This again, it's got the asphalt survey, there's no portion that's um. We don't need that elevation map. Okay, uh, bingo. Anybody have any questions, comments, scripters errors? Wording, changes?
I do notice that we failed to include language requiring. A notice of drainage maintenance form in the condition. That may be something that we want to include, there's not um. They're, they're only treating stormwater quality, but uh, they are, they are putting in underground structures. Uh, which should require a notice of drainage maintenance.
We need to do that.
Another one. Yep, we had it, one and that's.
Okay, it's tough to do as amended. All right, that being said, looking for a motion to approve as amended? Karen Caitley, looking for a second? Larry Warble, alls in favor? Hi, great, you know, big stuff, fantastic. Bingo, number seven, those are done. Okay, we're, we're trying to stop this thing, and definitely before ten o'clock. Uh, what are we up to next? The next item, which is, you remember, special permit number thirty five C is in Charlie Yacht Club, twenty three Baywater Drive. That has been, um, is it still on the, still on the agenda?
Yeah, we explained to the applicant that uh. The stuff we got is that there's going to be a public hearing and uh. They agreed that it would be appropriate to have a public hearing, so they're going to put together a formal application, better justify the request. Giving us more details, trying to work with the neighbors if they can before the hearing, and don't, you'll see this in February.
So technically, this item was withdrawn, um, and they're going to come up with a new application.
Correct, the complete full application.
Okay, great. Um, the next item is uh, subdivision application number six twenty seven. Coastal site plan review number three forty nine, landfilling and landfilling excavation and regaining application. Number um, four eighty two ninety Penry Point Road. Request extension of time to demolish existing structures and file the map, subdivision map and the land records. This. This, we can do it, but we also think it's already done by statute by governor's orders.
Right, there, there's certainly a, a question, we, we've had a number of questions recently about what is covered by the governor's executive orders relative to automatic extensions of time. And certainly, there's no doubt that if you had an approval before COVID hit in March of twenty twenty, that your approval doesn't lapse. The governor basically, at this point, has given everyone eleven months. Now, come next month, he might extend it even further, but anyone who had a prior approval, that continues on, uh, with at least an eleven-month extension. In this case, when I spoke to Wilder Gleason on behalf of the applicant, I said this was really a pre-COVID approval, this occurred during the pandemic. Uh, I wasn't in specific language, but I said, you know what, I'm gonna bring it to the commission just to play it safe. I would fully believe that due to the pandemic and some other reasons that an extension of time is certainly warranted and worthy, and can be granted by the commission in this case.
Okay. So, I mean, we can do it and automatically done. Any question on this one? It's just really rubber stamp, if you ask me. Okay. Uh, motion to approve this, we need a motion to approve, right? Okay, a motion to approve this extension, that was Kara? Right? Kara, yes, um, Larry, second. Jim Brant, third, all those in favor? Next, okay. Next item on the agenda, commercial.
Jeremy, I would like clarification on that, because I think it's important, because we have deliberated other people having requests for extensions. So I think, you know, it was brought up today, sort of incremental approvals and being equitable and treating applicants in an equitable and comparable way. I think we should have some clarity, I don't think it needs to come before a public here, we know, but I think on the governor's extension issue, it's important to have clarity on that.
Yes, I will, I will work on that, I did, uh, speak to town council, uh, and certainly it was very clear pre-COVID, but I'll, I'll get clarity on that.
And I mean, if, and if, if, if post the declaration of the public health order by the governor, you know, whatever, you know, sort of whatever the deciding time is, right? I don't wanna say pre-COVID, post-COVID, because I think it's more about when the governor's, you know, emergency health order was issued, and then his executive order since, and what the executive orders say in them regarding automatic extensions and sort of where those time, you know, triggering timelines are. I, 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 I just think having clarity on that would be, um, uh, important, hopefully we won't need it, but it's good to, I think, know what those, you know, finer points are in case we're presented with a similar application at some point.
We should know what executive order number it is.
Seven JJ.
I know which one it is.
You did. That's why you're a lawyer and I'm not. Um, all right, that's, we did that one, okay? Next. Commercial guidelines, uh, commercial design guidelines, acknowledgement of the recent amendments regarding planning landscaping incorporated by the Architecture Review Board, ARB. Uh, we got a letter in our packet that was addressed to me dated December thirtieth, um, I think most of us read it. Um, Jeremy, what's the derivation of this?
Sure, back in two thousand nine, uh, the ARB, along with some folks who helped assist them, wrote this document, commercial design guidelines, posted on the website. Uh, it's about thirty pages long with a thirty to thirty-five page appendix, but it, it talks a lot about things who are, folks who are building commercial projects should look at and consider when they're designing their projects. For example, screening the AC units, putting some kind of fence or landscape around them, thinking about walkability, windows, uh, is the page on lighting here. And the ARB was looking through this and realized they wanted to do some updates, especially relative to the issue of landscaping. Back in the day, I think the town's premise, especially along the post-road, uh, as the town talked about model blocks, brick sidewalks, frantic curbs, the, the thought process was generally using Bradford pear trees. But I think since then, the ARB more recently has said, you know what? If whatever tree you choose gets, uh, diseased, or there's a, a common problem with the trees, you're totally wiped out. Uh, because you lose all the trees in your downtown. So they, they kind of shifted to more of a variety, emphasis on many different species being used throughout downtown, so they changed that. And while they changed that, we also updated a number of items in the design guidelines relative to, for example, in the appendix, they showed a zoning map. So we replaced it with the most recent zoning map. We put in here, for example, the most recent ARB application. We've changed some of the references relative to section. But I at least wanted to make the commission aware of this document. It's kind of interesting, fascinating to look at some of the things the ARB looks at when they look at various redevelopment projects in downtown, lighting, signage, landscaping. How the trees work together, what types of benches should use, trash bins. So this is the document, I wanted to make the commission aware that it has been updated, uh, if anyone wants a hard copy, of course, let me know, but, uh.
Who's the author of that?
I think technically it's the Architecture Review Board.
Okay. So they can update whatever they want to do.
Right, but they wanted to make you the commission aware.
So this letter, um, with regards to landscaping architect, I, I take it Leslie McCall is a landscape architect?
She is.
Licensed in the States, so she had a lot.
She had a lot to do with it, was really the lead on the landscaping, uh, because she was able to add her specific expertise to that.
That one's a great resource to have, so they'd have to go outside to some Joe Pop or whatever, okay? Um, at the end of the day, um, the, the, um, Architecture Review Board approved this, these recommendations are asking the paying side to consider them for our endorsement and use also. Um, so that's where the discussion comes down to amongst us. At the end of the day, they're looking to us, um, to approve these, I guess via a vote. So any questions, comments?
I, I can't acknowledge or approve it, I don't have it, read or don't have, I just can't.
Read or don't have what? You don't have the document?
No. I don't have the letter either.
I got this in my packet. You didn't get this letter? Did everybody else get the letter?
Maybe not.
Did anybody else get it, or am I?
Email, that's the only one I.
Yeah, I, I thought we emailed the, the report out to all commission members, is that not the case?
Thursday afternoon. It's tough, it was two years ago.
All right, you wanna punt the ten X?
I'm looking on, I can't find it there either.
Drop back and punt.
We'll put this next week. Give everyone a chance to read.
Does everybody have a copy of that design line?
I just don't have it. It was, it's from Thursday, right?
Yeah, Thursday afternoon, I think, uh.
I have one.
I were putting the packets together, we debated whether to include hard copies or send everyone away.
Well, you know, I'm lazy as hell.
Do you want hard copies in, in their next packet going out at the end of this week, or is it sufficient to have the, the emailed version of it?
Emails fine.
The website is fine.
Emails fine.
Okay, I'm the only, I'm the only old guy that wants hard copy.
Okay.
Gonna punt it next week.
We'll put it out next week.
All right, punt. Um, next item for bid, subcommittee report. Um, all I know is that Fred got the authorization, Fred is now the, the author of that document, or the, the domain person of that document, and sent it back?
Well, what we did, we, uh, we sent it out to the subcommittee, uh, we can certainly give an update, certainly. Uh, Fred and I were in a meeting earlier today, uh, which was led by Sarah Bronin, to talk about some of the proposals. They've since, I call it refined them, they're, Fred, stop me if I'm wrong, I didn't see anything that was taken off the table. I think all the proposals are still in there, some have been tweaked, some have been refined, some of more detail added, but I don't think they've uh, eliminated any of the proposals that I could see. There was nothing taken off the table, so they're still, at this point, moving ahead. Uh, I've been in different meetings, Fred was in a meeting today where they're getting, um, mixed, let's call it mixed feedback, would you say that was accurate?
Uh, so. Yeah, that's. Yeah, it's definitely accurate, there, there's certainly some opposition present at this point, and we're seeing more of, more of that pop up at this point. Uh, we have reason to believe that, uh, the senators that are responsible for putting together this draft legis- legislation are pretty far down the road at this point in terms of putting something together that will likely be presented in the legislature, uh, as the new, as the new session gets started, uh, tomorrow, actually. The, the new session begins in the legislature, we don't have any real sense at this point when that particular legislation will be presented, but, uh, we do have reason to believe that it is quite far down the road, and, uh, we expect it to go to, uh, CCM within the next week to ten days, uh, and, uh, you know, if a recommendation comes out of CCM.
That means council, um.
Medicaid council means well.
Got it.
Yeah.
There's still, desegregated CT is trying, you know, still working on pulling together support. As you may have heard, Senator Anwar is having a session this Thursday at seven PM, uh. He was invited by Darian Talks Housing, I think you all got an invite to that. Uh, I was to hear him speak, I'm gonna keep his thoughts on that, if you haven't registered, I recommend it. But certainly, uh, Fred and I are trying to keep tabs on, uh, what the proposals are, what the thought process is. I think there's a couple items we're still trying to get clarity on, but no one's able to give us clarity on things like changing the traffic standard. No one i- in the past three months has been able to explain to me what that new standard is and why it's better, worse, whatever it is. Um, all they say is California uses it. Yeah, well.
Jeremy, has, has anyone ever sort of really approached or spoken about, you know, the conservation of water issue, which I, I really, I think it's such an important issue, and I don't, I think it's getting overlooked, and I, I think it was, um, it might have been Francis Pickard who brought up, right, like clean water and, and adequate water supply really is a social justice issue, and it's an issue that is so important, and much of Connecticut's land regulations regarding lot size and single family joints comes out of this desire because cities did not adequately protect and conserve water that the neighboring municipalities had to. And, and it happens here, right, Darian supplies water to other larger neighboring cities, and it, it just surprises me that that never seems to come up, it just kind of gets, you know, there's like this marching of like desegregating, when I, obviously, I'm not a fan of segregation, like, no, I'm not, I'm not in favor of that at all. But I, I just wonder, you know, I think those points are so important, especially what we, you know, what we've seen in Flint, Michigan, other places, where there were really serious water issues, and, you know, it's, it's important, and I just wonder why they never sort of acknowledge it or wanna talk about it.
You know, it's funny, Kara, that is the thing first and foremost, especially from the more rural communities that don't have public sewer systems, it comes out at every single meeting. Hey, I need a property big enough that I can put a well that won't be contaminated by my septic system or my neighbor's septic system.
Exactly.
Space, and when they keep saying, okay, just create for four, six, eight, ten, twelve people per acre. I think here at every single meeting from every rural community is, uh, please tell us how we can do that, because the state, on the other hand, is saying we can't do that. When you automatically, one of the big concepts is automatic rezoning, if you live in a certain area and have certain.
Close to station or close to wherever.
Close to main roads, you know, one of the things that, if you're near main roads and you have sidewalks near those main roads, and there's a bus driving down that main road, boom, you're rezoned.
Right, automatically.
You can imagine in these rural communities, which might have two main roads going through them, uh, but no sewer, no public water, I think that needs to be a consideration. Uh, there's ways to, as Fred and I were talking earlier today, you know, there's ways to put septic systems in the ground, there's ways to do septic systems, but to automatically it's automatically rezoned without giving that some consideration, I think is at a minimum unfair, but that they need to really consider.
I recall, if I can insert here, that, uh, Tim Hollister made a comment at a webinar I heard, uh, stating what is apparently a well-known principle in land use, and that is development follows the pipe.
Yeah.
And, um, you know, you've just gotta, you gotta have provisions by, by, uh, infrastructure in order to accommodate that kind of thing. And then the other comment I just wanted to insert here is that I, I was reading a Connecticut Mirror, um, article the other day, which summarized some earlier stuff. Uh, and this one happened to state that as of June, at least, the governor was not in favor of taking away local authority in these land used issues. Um, I don't know that anybody's heard from him since, but this particular article did state, uh, that was his view at that time. So.
Yeah. Uh, all right, so what are we doing with the, with the subcommittee document?
Yeah, Steve, as, uh, what I was gonna say, in terms of the documents, that last version that was sent around as far as the subcommittee concerned, that it's, it's, it's fine, they delivered it to you.
Right, so we should finalize that thing.
Yeah.
All right. So we gotta, we gotta get, we gotta get that back and finalize it, talk to with it, just to make it.
George, just because I saw that you're on the DTC's agenda, so they asked you to come in to talk about planning and zoning's position?
Uh, I think it's actually an and, uh, function to, to encourage people to run for office, it, it's not a DTC thing, I don't believe.
And, okay, so it's just and, not DTC, and it has nothing to do with, um, planning and zoning then, other than you're
Well.
that you ran for office, less, less to do with running for office than. Okay.
It has more to do with running for office than it does any particular issue at this point, as far as I know.
Yeah, I don't know, they have.
Okay. Um, Kim, anything on this subcommittee stuff? You're on mute, Jim.
Um, I'll just add one thing that I don't know, because George, you talked about the Connecticut Mirror, and I can send the article around, but maybe some of you have already read it. There was another article on the Connecticut Mirror about sort of a, an additional step forward on, um, the desegregating and sort of issue with Connecticut towns being sort of like, you know, that Connecticut is one of the most, to their work, I don't know if this is factually accurate, but their, you know, their premise is, uh, uh, most segregated area in the country, and the next idea they seem to be moving towards is, um, linking, um, school construction funding from the state to, um, segregation, desegregation efforts, and, uh, towns that have not adequately in to whatever their metrics are, which again, there's not a lot of detail around it, um, that is not adequately, uh, desegregated or made steps to increase access to their school system, which was actually, um, included in, in their, their sort of ideas, um, that they would, um, not have access to, um, state bonding and, uh, school construction funding. And Westport was specifically cited, um, their mold construction, mold, um, uh, remediation on Coley, Coley Middletown, uh, Coley Town Middle School, um, so I think, you know.
Yeah, Todd, and I think, uh, they were particularly talking about a program called Open Choice, I think it is.
I believe Dr. Adley has raised.
Exactly, Dr. Adley is, is a proponent, so maybe there'll be some action that way.
I think it's been on the Board of Ed Agenda, actually, so, um, obviously, that's not our, but I think they're linking them all together.
Yeah.
Can you send that article again, I don't know if I saw.
Yes.
The only thing that I would, the only thing I would add to that comment, and I, I'd forget who was around at what point in time, but remember that chart that we did that says Darian has had thirty-two percent affordable housing over the past twenty years? Did, one of the derivations for that chart was at one point in time, somebody.
Did, one of the derivations for that chart was at one point in time, somebody in Hartford, and I don't know who. You know, it was governed, let's say, said that they were gonna tie transportation funds to affordable housing. So like, we're we're supposed to get our train stations redone, and it's gonna, the the state's gonna give us, you know. Ten million dollars. They were gonna withhold those transportation funds if you don't do affordable housing, so. We got in front of it and said, hey, we already did the affordable housing. We did this X percent. That's why we had to tally it. So if any of us said, you know, we're not giving Darian money to redo their train station because this isn't this. You know, we had proof to back it up. So it sounds like what you just mentioned, Kara, is they're doing the same thing.
Transit issue has not gone away either. I mean, that's on a federal level has also been, that was Cory Booker's proposal, and I think it's been, you know. It's been endorsed by. President-elect Biden, so I think that issue on both the national and the state level is still alive.
But I think, I mean, I don't know, I'm a follower of stuff.
Are as to what you have to show, right, to satisfy, right? I think the, you know, I don't like, I think I'm selling this from George, the devil's in the details. And so I think to your point, having statistics on what efforts you have made revising regulations regarding, you know, not. Not, you know, like towns at one point. Did not permit certain kinds of, you know, so that was exclusionary zoning, right? We've made a lot of strides away from that and have. A lot of efforts made towards being more inclusive and providing more diversity in housing. But again, what the details are and what the, but where you have to reach and what gets counted and how it's of a certain age, it's not counted, like, who knows, right? There's different ways to.
The only thing that I want to add to this point of it, even though it's not really my report, is relative to subcommittee. I'm still on that that Chair of Chairs Committee thing. We've had a couple other meetings, and I forget where they were because we haven't met in a month. And there's, they they know the woman from Greenwich who everybody met. And then Daniel Dobin, who is from Westport, who's their chairman, that may, or some of you guys may have met, may or may not have met. They're really in the front of this thing, and they're bantering me with questions all the time and and my opinion and how we're doing it. They're really, they're they're, they're in front of it. You know, and so I'm letting them do whatever they do. They don't, just so you know, they don't speak for us. But they ask my opinion. The one thing that keeps popping up is. The the accessory dwelling units. You know, me personally, I have my own issues with those. I think we'll see pool houses pop up. They they tweaked it a little bit, that the accessory dwelling units, if people do build them, doesn't count towards the denominator to figure how much affordable housing you have. But then again, also, these accessory dwellings don't count towards. They call it few points, but we call it more. Same thing.
Because they're not deed restricted, you don't get credit when you apply for a moratorium. And the fact that they might be market rate, who knows what they might rent for. Whether that's whatever problem it may solve, who knows? But that seems to, they still are big proponents of allowing those as a right. With some conditions or parameters yet to be determined, so certainly if commission members have thoughts or ideas.
I would bring that up in a minute, too. So, I mean, the part of story is, is if. If some, if we, we got a couple advocates this year where people want to put kitchens in their pool houses. If we eventually allow a kitchen in a pool house, that's considered an accessory dwelling unit. I don't think anyone's going to allow the the apartment that's in the pool house to be deed restricted, so only. Affordable people can live there. I also don't think they're gonna rent them out. And I guess if you get a deed restricted, you don't rent it out. I I don't think you get, you get nothing, right? It doesn't do anything, so it's the question that keeps coming back to me, is any of these, will they move the dial? And the answer I say is. Right, it hasn't, Greenwich, Greenwich has got a hundred of them and ten of them are deed restricted.
We have them here, too. I mean. Like, so let's not pretend they're not here, because they are.
Okay, so that's it for the subcommittee report, right? Okay, directors, but I really want to get this thing over at ten o'clock, so. Big fans, directors for Jeremy.
The only thing I want to mention is our staff did go out, including myself, to visit the Oxford School property. Construction had started out there. They put up the sediment controls. They're out there preparing, putting up the construction fence, and they're moving ahead. Try to continue to monitor, in fact, we're gonna go out again later this week. But things are moving along now.
So they do any official groundbreaking or? They come and say Spanish?
I don't know.
It's all COVID stuff. I mean, they never did anything with with the Royal.
Jeremy? On the subject of of Oxbridge. Two questions. Is there, is there a time at which? They're allowed to start work?
Usually what most construction sites start at seven. There's no limit, but most of them start at seven.
There's no limit in terms of Darian's rules and so on and so forth.
No, if there's an issue, give me a call, but he did mention that he's trying not to start. Is that when they're starting?
They're starting about seven fifteen, seven twenty.
When the sun comes up.
I don't hear it, but my dear bride hears it. The other thing is. Is somebody attending that site on a regular basis to determine are they staying within the bounds? In terms of where they're cutting trees and so on and so forth. I mean, they're right behind us. And they're taking trees out of there today like hell would have it.
Yep, that was one thing, phase one, is they're creating a temporary drainage system. I'll call it what I'll call the sledding hill. As you go behind it, it goes like this. That's gonna be a new sledding hill in town, and that's where the temporary drainage system's going. So they had to take the trees down to build the temporary drainage system, which will serve for about a year, year and a half before they can. Take the pipes from the new building, tie them into the final drainage system. Well, they had to create this pathway down the hill. Create the drainage system, which I saw New Year's Eve in the morning. Big, big hole, bigger than this room, and three feet down, and the water during. Construction will go in there, and that'll be, we did talk to.
But the trees get marked. They're not taken down. They're not doing a Bob Calvi and going.
These are trees that have been envisioned to be taken down.
And they self-report, too. There's a format on the site. So there's, there's, there's people on the building committee that report to them. There's a format on site that reports back. And then, you know, our Z E O guys go out once in a while.
Okay, one last quick issue. Out of, as a matter of curiosity, what happened to the railroad's request to? Take the parking next to the depot?
As far as I know, it's dead. I have not heard an update one way or the other.
Okay, but the applications moved as far as, is that the right word?
It's not going ahead.
It got pulled from a, from a first selectman agenda, from a selectman, again, it also got pulled. Yeah.
Alright, that's fine, thanks.
Probably covered it's done. You done, Jeremy? Fred's all good? Okay, Chairman's report. The only thing I wanted to report is, is I want to do some kind of what I would call initiatives for twenty twenty-one. There's a bunch of things that we have to do statutorily, and we're gonna do statutorily, like one is the Affordable Housing Plan. That's due when? In twenty twenty-two?
Yes.
Let's do. It's due in twenty twenty-two, so it's a little bit of a, of a town. It's kind of like a town plan or conservation development. But it's something that we have to do statutorily. We're also obviously monitoring the state regulations with regards to all this. Stuff that Senator Anwar proposed and whatnot. Then the other thing that we have that we're working on is our. We talked about the legal counsel and representative legal counsel. We gotta move that ball forward on that quote-unquote initiative. Jeremy did send, has the. The RFP that went out for the auditors that were not, I think, mid-last year. I I would, I just really kind of got it, but it went out last year, so that's kind of the model I think we're supposed to. I would have talked to Jamie and company about that, I think, a week in a meeting. The other thing that I would like to somehow banter around amongst the commissioners in this cut, is this concept of accessory dwelling units. To put that on our agenda and see what it can do. I mean, we're allowed to write our own zoning code. You know, every time we do a new zoning amendment or plan or add something, it's always done by an applicant. We can be in the forefront and do it. You yourselves. I think we should do it, right?
Like this incremental change in, right, a plan of conservation development that's like, sort of like, very. Forward-looking and in-depth and thoughtful and high level is done every ten years. And then we incrementally seem to chip away at it and chip away at sort of what was a planned. Zoning and regulatory scheme, and I really do worry about it. Doing this on an ad hoc basis, and and it's, you know, so I think. We should look at some of the things on agendas or that are out there and being discussed and think about how we can. Write the regs or revise them to maybe adopt things and have it work for the town and. Move things forward where we think it works for the town and is appropriate. And I think, you know, there's no reason to fear that or not do it.
So what, so what I would like to do, and I I started doing a little bit, and then I obviously stopped, and it was year end or whatever. Is do like, you know, just a list. And have, there's ten things on the list, and we come back in November of next year and say, hey, we did these ten things during during the year. State, that's just one of them, the photo housing plan's one of them, this legal council thing's another one. The other one that we keep talking about, and exactly what Kara was just mentioning, too, was this. The downtown parking. I don't feel like going out and getting another parking study. You know, if you look at the file, there's parking studies on top of parking studies, and the town spent literally a hundred thousand dollars on parking studies. One of them I know that was done by. Bruce, not Bruce Beinfield. Nelson Nygaard. That thing was expensive. And it goes round and round and round, and you get an eighty-page document, and somebody's page, we gotta remember, we don't have any, any money. We don't have a budget for stuff like this. We do get a budget to do town plan and conservation, because Jeremy puts in for it two years ago. But I would like to get any of our, you know, professional laypeople commissioners on it. I I can tell you that I I met with the people in New Canaan. New Canaan somehow or other got two million dollars of state, out of the state of Connecticut to do a parking garage at their train station. And it's a user-lose-it thing. I don't know where they got the grant from. I don't know how they got it. But they had the money, and their parking structure, whatever they did, cost them four million bucks. But they they only had two million dollars, so they were short, too, so they've never done anything. I want to be able to come up with some kind of plan that we can do. In some way, shape, or form, because there are a couple pieces of dirt in town that are either owned by the state or owned by the town. That have the ability to be parking, but I want, if, I want to be able to say it's kind of quote-unquote shovel-ready. That, you know, we can apply for something at some point in time if the funds are ever out there. I don't know how the mechanics of those shovel-ready and applying for funds goes, but I know that. The the town gets them a lot, you know, the police department gets them a lot, you know, I don't know how it works. I don't know if they're out there. Who the heck knows? One of the other things inside my list is, and we talked about it a little bit tonight, was the tree plan. If you look at the post road east of the railroad tracks, the trees are huge. And if you go out there in a regular day, so it's where Kumon is, is where Eight Hundred Post Road is. On one side of the tracks, it's bright and sunny. You go under the trust, and you come up on the other side of the tracks, it's dark. If you ever look up, it's because of the trees. You know, that's really not our bailiwick, but that side of the track is.
Going there in the morning, and I'm coming back at night.
So that's something that I want to be able to kind of look at and have, you know, can we do something, can we not do something? You know, we focus really on the other side of the tracks for the last four years. The only thing we've done on that side of track is Barbida's over there.
Nice job with the outdoor done.
Heights Pizza did a great job. The things we improved there are Heights Pizza Kumon. Barbuda's brand new, and what's the other one? Fight the Learning Center. So we're on, we're on that side of the tracks a little bit, but I want to make sure we do that. The other thing I'd like to try to figure out is, is, I know John Louisa stated a little bit at one point in time. Is our current status with eight twenty, with eight thirty G moratorium points. What is our count? I don't really know what our count is. You know, with all the stuff in the pipeline, where do we go? You know, are we that far away?
That, in that, that data, remember, there was, the sheet that you talked about that was put together, saying like what we've done. In the past however many years with regards to it and building, and. I believe there was another. Document after that, or at some point circulated, that, no, it was in the John Louisa, in, it was. Of older things. And there's the count in there, I think. I have it somewhere. I can search.
Get our eye on that and make sure we know what's going on. I'm never really chasing moratorium points. I'd rather get the units, you know, and diversify the housing stock. You know, some items, some problems we're gonna, with with what's called East Lane. We're not gonna get a whole lot of points out of that, but we're gonna get twelve great units.
Sorry, I keep interrupting, but. I think to, you know, to bring up to Senator Anwar or like leader, you know, Terry Wood or Bob Duff, I know Carlo is moving on to. A new appointment, but, you know, raise to them. The issue with the points, because, you know, to me, that senior housing. And housing for handicap, you know, disabled, you know, however, they're disabled adults. Is lesser points. For me, it's just, I don't know, like. Sort of just seems like, I I don't get it, like, why are they less? Why did those units count less? Because it's a person over sixty-five or or somebody who has mental or physical. Disabilities or impairment. I don't understand why housing for those people counts any less.
I mean, like seventy-seven Leroy, the Leroy Rest Project, it's got five affordable housing units in there. They they fought about that for ten years. We got two and a half points out of that thing. Yeah, two and a half points up, building, and that, they, and. Right, it's senior units. It's, it makes, it makes no sense. I mean, I don't. Terry Wood, I mean, I don't want to go back in history, and that's really not what my report's supposed to be.
I talked about it. I mean, it's like, you need to have more than just one person pushing for that and sort of raising that issue, and if. Affordable, if housing and desegregation and affordable, if these issues are gonna be on the legislative slate. Then I think if there's a time to advocate and sort of raise other issues, then it's now.
Yeah, it's, it's, Terry Wood, years ago, I guess, we started to say, fought that fight, and she got nowhere. And I don't, you know, I don't know what it is, but. I I want to be able to, at the end of the day, is get something done. The other thing was on our list is. Is Liz Geiger and the the Architectural Review Board, they came up with this concept of the village district. Do we want to move the ball forward on that? It's in our town plan, conservation department. Do you want to just leave it die?
With, I thought they were gonna come back with kind of more, there was two different kinds, right? There was like a historic zone, or I I don't really remember the exact proper wordage under the state statutes, but there was. A historic village district or something else, and it was like, okay, which direction did they want to go? And I thought they were gonna come back to us.
And and I just did a deal in New Canaan where Bankwell's headquarters can be, that that building, Bankwell's building is in a village district. I, you know, I didn't know that, and I had to go through zoning hoops to make sure it worked.
Yeah, I'm not into it. I just, you were asking general opinions or that we wanted to, or not?
Well, if 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 it's something that's, if if, I'm looking to put things where I call initiatives. If it dies, it dies. If it, if we look at it and debate it and it dies, that's fine. We look at it, debate it, and it gets approved.
Ever came back to us with what they want.
I don't think the ball's on our court. You're right. I don't think the ball's on our court. Okay.
I wouldn't stir it up, personally.
Yeah, I wouldn't stir.
I agree.
We don't need to touch it.
So that's kind of it. The only other thing is, is if we can identify affordable housing sites. In our town and be in front of it and say, hey, listen, we know about this site, or we know about that site. That's a real estate issue, and again, we don't have any money. But the reason why you get a moratorium, so you can plan your own path.
Where do we, like, who then developed, we, is that like the Darian Housing Authority, or then who we identify, and then where do we go to towns like, like, what what's sort of the process?
They're doing it in Westport, but the answer is yes.
Yeah, like, does?
In our, in our town, you can either do it with the Darian Housing Authority, but you gotta remember that Darian Housing Authority has, they have limited expertise themselves. When they did their two projects, they brought in a third party.
Right, and they only own two properties.
Correct.
So in this case, more likely, Kara, what I would envision is, as part of the Affordable Housing Plan, the consultant we would work with, we would, uh, I would certainly talk to them and others would talk to them about, hey, here's a couple sites, we go drive them around town and say, look at this site, it's on public water, it's on public sewer, it's of sufficient size, it doesn't have wetlands, steep slopes, it's not on a river, whatever it is, and say, what do you think? Is there potential to redevelop this site? So I think a lot of that will come out of the Affordable Housing Plan ideas uh to for, to create both large projects and smaller ways of creating more smaller projects.
Yeah, I'm sorry. Or mixed use, more mixed kind of stuff.
Yeah, the thing that I've found in my, over my career, and even in our town, is public, public-private partnerships work the best.
Yeah.
You know, if they're all, if they're all public, you know, the the numbers go wide, and it just, it gets crazy. You know, if it's public-private, it's great, you have self-control. Um, there's a couple more things on my little initiatives list, um, I'll make it more formal another time, but I'm good for now. It is now ten oh two, um, I really want to make sure we end this thing on time, and I'm tired of talking myself. So that is, that's my Chairman's report for today, and thank you for listening. Um, do we want to do the minutes now?
It's up to you, now or next week, it'll take five minutes.
Okay, um, did everybody review the minutes, and and anything we can bang those out real quick? We have three sets of minutes to do, that's always, whenever I read these books, it's always the last thing that I do is the minutes.
I've got nothing in any of them.
November twenty-fourth, December first, summer night, November twenty-fourth. That's a seven eleven meeting. George, oh, George is moving to approve, we have a motion to approve on the table. Second, for a second, there's a second. Whoa, all's, any discussion, all's in favor, say aye.
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 That's them, all right, next, December first, uh, minutes. Uh, public hearing, some docs, not much. At a resolution, looking for a motion to approve, or script, news errors, corrections, edits, anything?
Motion to approve.
There you go, we have the motion, look for a second, Larry's got a second, all's in favor?
Aye.
That's good, great. Um, December ninth, another seven eleven meeting. This, though, this was the one where where they talked for two and a half hours. And there's another one. Um, looking to, looking for us to approve, I've submitted, any, any questions, comments, Jim Rand, is in a game, motion to approve by Jim Rand. Looking for a second, George Riley, is that you?
Yeah, sure.
Hey, and Kara, uh, all in favor? Aye, there we go, got everybody, great.
Next meeting, the staff did a very good job with them, thank you, guys.
Any other bits, because two-thirds voted commission? Next upcoming meetings, Tuesday, January twelfth, and then Tuesday, January twenty-sixth.
We're gonna aim to have two draft resolutions for you next week. Um, the two more routine public hearings, the mathnasium and dynamic martial arts, we'll put those up the agenda for a vote next week.
Okay, great, and Wednesday, Martin Luther King, is that usually, is that?
Oh, that's the weekend.
It's not the twenty, it's not the twenty, oh, it's the one, it's the one that we tweeted to, got it, okay. All right, that's it, folks, sorry, went late.
Hey, Steve, before we go, I just kind of have a helpful tip for everybody.
Yep.
So if you ever find yourself in airport security, somehow on your travels managed to lose your driver's license, and they're asking you for a government-issued document, you can hold up your little tan and Darian PNC.
Oh, no kidding?
Uh, and say, here's my government document.
Even without a picture?
Really good and talking fast, your photo ID can be your.
I've used that, I've used Costco before.
But this is also a man, aren't you dating a airline pilot?
Uh, I I I was, I am, yes, I I know, it's not past that, I am. That that doesn't have anything to do with with security, I don't believe it.
Your town didn't, they worked with a Costco card to get on an airplane?
Yes.
Here, I've just.
They, they, they went through all my luggage like you would believe.
That's a good.
But they uh they let me on, I know, I think it had to do with, I was, I'm on pre-clears, they had me in there, but I was like.
All right, that being said.
You gotta, you gotta put on a good show, but, you know.
Yeah, but the person standing next to you has a hat on and a briefcase that says Unit Airlines, that's usually a pretty good show. Looking for a motion to.
Adjourn this thing yet?
There you go, we got George. Good, there we go. All right, I think Jennifer seconded, all in favor, aye.
Uh, sorry, Jen.
Hey. Thank you, everybody, have a great night, all.